Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Abington Planning Board meeting, July tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We're going to start with an informal discussion with the SRA, Brookfield Properties, and New England Development, R.E. Southfield. So, John.
Good evening. I guess I'll sit down, if that's okay. My name is John Tuig with New England Development. Paul Sin-Carter is with me, Tony Green behind me, Tim Sullivan in the back, who you'll hear from, Ricardo DuMont, who is our designer and lead person on that. I'm not sorry, tonight was, we don't have anything formally in front of the town, but to sort of come in and tell you a little bit about who we are, we haven't spent any time, or really certainly with you folks, to talk to you about sort of process and zoning. You have a big presentation, I know you have other things on your agenda that's supposed to be an informal discussion. A thought is maybe we would hit a couple of points, just to kind of give you an orientation, that's what this intended to be. Obviously, this is not the first, this is the first, but not the last time we'll be talking about this. So, Mr. Chairman, sorry, we'll run through a couple of slides, just to sort of tell you who we are, what we do, and what are...
So, this will be a recap of what was done at Fairing Way?
Very similar to Fairing Way, some information, if you, I don't know if any of you remember, I did, obviously, you were there, if others were there or not, just to kind of give you a sense of who we are and the ones. So, Paul, if we could, just maybe run through a little bit. As I mentioned, so those are the plays, also with me, Robert Peers from Brookfield Properties, again, John Tuig, Tony Green, and Paul. Our key consultants, you'll hear a little bit from Ricardo, we're just going to do two minutes on a little bit of vision, because we thought it might be helpful if you saw that. Tetra Tech is sort of our infrastructure people, focused on transportation, water, and so, we're not going to get into that really tonight, we'll touch on it real quick. Transportation is Jeff Durk at VAI, he's sort of doing our transportation study. RKG, RKG is a fiscal consultant, who we sort of bring to, we first met, he mostly represents governmental entities and municipalities, he did do an analysis, because this project is a little different, you actually have a project in Waymouth that's built, and there's so many homes, and you can sort of, unusually, rather than just totally projecting, gee, what could this be in the future, we sort of have an example, so we'll touch a little bit about that, and then Tim Sullivan will talk about the zoning, because obviously, that's what's going to come in front of you formally, will be the zoning itself. So, a couple of things we'll touch on, obviously, who we are, what we've been doing since the site selection, we were selected a while ago, there's just two points I'll kind of cover, which will be land ownership and the Navy, which I think are important to sort of understand, because they sort of weren't done until March of this year and the end of last year, and they're really important things. Just give you a quick overview of the timeline, a little bit of master plan, which will be Ricardo, touch on the zoning, which will be Tim, and then some of these others, if we have time, but if we don't. So, we go to the next one, a little bit about New England Development, I'm not going to read any of this, New England Development's been around about forty years, was founded by our chairman, Steve Carpe, we're originally a regional shopping center, model developer, sort of morphed about twenty years ago into doing all kinds of different projects, went into doing marinas, doing offices, doing outlet centers, all kinds of different things, we own a lot of the properties in Antica, Newburyport, a couple of projects I'll show you, maybe Paul, if you go to the first one. University Station, the reason I show you University Station's a project that we did, are still doing, because it has a lot of similarities to Union Point, in some ways, because it was a failed project of a certain size, with a lot of different mixed uses. We took that project over, it's about a hundred and twenty acres, about two million square feet, a couple of hotels, retail, it's where the Wegmans is, it's where actually Amtrak comes in to Westwood, about six hundred and fifty residences, three office buildings, we have two medical centers there, we just actually sold our, one of our pieces to Dana Farber, they're now a brain cancer center there, but it was similar in the sense of it had failed, it was taken over by, foreclosed on, had to be restarted, re-permitted, so it actually has a lot of similarities too, and we've got about two million square feet built there today. Cambridge Side is a project we're doing right now, if you go to, if you know Cambridge Side at all, it's a Cambridge Side Galleria, a project I worked on when I was but a child in nineteen eighty-seven, and a very young lawyer. That was, at the time, a cutting-edge, six-level mall, three levels down, three levels up, we've repurposed it, still has a retail center, but we're building two lab buildings there now. We sort of, about five years ago, went into life science business quite a bit, and we're building, hopefully by October, we'll have two buildings ready there, which are about a million square feet of life sciences, as well as office, we're doing residential there on the corner of First Street, it's right on the canal crossing the Charles River, so it's a big campus. Pine Hills, which a lot of people, obviously, in the area know, is a project about three thousand acres, has about twenty-five hundred homes built there today, which is another New England Development project. So, that's a little bit about us. Project Team, Brookfield, Brookfield is, depending on the day, the largest or second-largest real estate company in the world, they are our partners on this, they have not done a lot of work here in New England, which is one of the reasons we're partnering with them, they're heavily in New York and down south and on the west coast, giving you a sense of some of the, I think today it's about two hundred and fifty billion dollars in assets, millions of square feet, sixty thousand homes, they're a large-scale developer, and we're partnered with them. Just a couple of examples of a local, University Park at MIT, this one's not local down in South Carolina, but gives you a sense, that was a five thousand acre development, this fourteen hundred acres here, a lot larger than what we were talking about here, but a combination of, it's interesting, the next in space, because it has similar types of property. What have we been doing? There are four things, and again, I'll be really quick, land ownership, the Navy, the redevelopment plan, and the zoning, that's really what our whole project has been. This is what we inherited when we got the land ownership, when we made a deal with Washington Capital. The reason this matters, and matters a great deal, is the yellow is what Washington Capital foreclosed on. The light pink that's labeled L-Star Southfield was the failed developer who was foreclosed on. He, up until the end of last year, L-Star, owned most of the land in Abington, still did, there was no mortgage on that, it was not foreclosed on. Stuff in purple is the Navy, and then there was a piece up on the right-hand side called the Coast Guard piece, and then sort of the dark magenta color is what's already been developed. It didn't work, the stuff on the left, we couldn't develop, we couldn't go forward, because we're natural heritage, which is off in the south where the turtles are, we have habitat, most of the land in Abington, a bunch of the land in Rockland, was all still owned by L-Star. We helped the SRA, the SRA actually did a taking at the end of the year, and took control of all that land, and we supported, they didn't actually even own the roads or any of the sewer and water infrastructure, it was still owned by L-Star. All the sort of light pink that you see that goes up through the existing development was all actually still controlled by L-Star, up until the end of last year. The Coast Guard piece up on the top right was something you may have heard of, that was where Coast Guard Housing was years ago, went to auction by the federal government, we ended up helping the SRA take control of it. Why does all that matter? Because you look at what we affectionately call the Humpty Dumpty Plan on the left, we had to turn it into the Plan on the Right, and what the Plan on the Right says, everything in light blue is available to actually be put under one master development. That didn't exist until the end of last year, what existed was on the left-hand side, which means you couldn't work with the state to get new permits, because you couldn't deal with natural heritage, you couldn't control the water and sewer, because that was all still on L-Star's control, most of the land in Abington was in fact, and in Rockland, was still owned by L-Star, so...
Correct. Pause one here, I don't mean to throw you off, it's...
Please don't, never throw me off.
So, just to understand this a little bit better, the one on the left, the parts in the yellow, is that what L-Star controlled at one time, but lost?
Correct, and lost, and then everything that's sort of in the pink, what we affectionately call kind of South America, and then over by Rockland, and then the roadways and the sewer and water infrastructure, that was still owned by them, they didn't have a mortgage on it. So, in Washington Capital, which is really the carpet industry, we foreclosed on it, we foreclosed on that, because they didn't have a mortgage on it.
So, who's been maintaining, you know, plowing and road maintenance since then?
It's been all over the place, it's been a combination of the SRA and the communities, depending on what it was, Waymouth did a lot of it, but, to give you an example, the sewer, sewer pump station, this is probably way too in the weeds, but had gone, and rather than processing what it should have been eighty to a hundred thousand gallons a day, was processing four hundred thousand gallons a day, because the system had failed. SRA didn't own it, L-Star owned it, they weren't going to put any money to fix it. That has actually, very recently, in the last sixty days, been fixed, which has brought the sewer flow from the base down from four hundred thousand gallons a day to about eighty-five. But, that's it, perfect example, there was no one guarding the store to actually be able to fix it, and that's why that matters.
So, on the right now, the parts in the, let's say, I don't know, magenta, purple, pink, whatever you want to call it, hot pink, who, is that still Navy land?
What is a Navy today is what we call the teapot parcel, over here, 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 and here, but the difference is, with Navy, they have an obligation to convey it to the SRA, that's an obligation to convey it to us, so...
Was that the environmental testing areas?
Depends, some of them were hotspots, one of them was where they had a dump, you know, so they have not been conveyed, all of this, obviously, was the Navy at one time, but the Navy has held on to a couple of pieces, but up until really March of this year, there was no way to get all of these pieces, go back to Paul if you would for a second. The yellow was what was in the foreclosure, then the light pink, we have a right to acquire these, so, that's okay, and then the Coast Guard, we actually helped the SRA buy the Coast Guard pieces. So, now, all of that, Coast Guard, the roadways, the sewer, the Navy pieces, what was at L-Star, can all become part of the light blue, and that's what comes to the master development.
So, the hot pink is others?
Yeah, and that's the development, there's twelve hundred and seventy-four homes there now.
Okay.
So, if you think about where the development is today, and where the sports center is, and where there are homes and like, that's what, that's what's it. Okay, so that, that obviously doesn't change. One of the things when we bring forward the zoning, we're not changing the zoning for where people live now, because it's not fair, and they bought under a certain zoning, we're not changing that, we're changing that, which is outside of what had been developed. So, that was probably the biggest thing that we did and spent time on, so Paul, if you could, I know you really wanted to put it on, I think you touched on some of your screen.
I did, my fault, all right. It takes some more time to figure that out.
Along about the time of the Fairing Way presentation, I was looking at the accessory maps, and it was, some of it was US Navy, the piece that's in Abington, some of it was US Navy, some of it was National Park Service, there were other parts, so, has that all been consolidated now?
Well, the National Park Service, again, mostly comes through the SRA, all of the Navy, there's an obligation for the Navy to convey it to the SRA, and the SRA has an obligation to convey it to us. There are a couple other, outside of that, I'll take the hot pink, outside of the hot pink, there's a company called Endeavor, L-Star doubled, tripled, quadrupled mortgage at a bunch of property, they have a couple of parcels out by the front entrance, they have another one there, they have it, but those are the only ones that aren't sort of in the family of being able to get control, and quite honestly, they aren't really relevant to what we can do for overall development. A little bit of Navy, I've shown a lot of time with the Navy, spent the last year with the Navy, talking to the Navy. The Navy's owed money, Navy gets money every year, we've actually just made the most recent payment in March for the base, we've got them to agree that rather than that money go down to Washington, that actually stay on the base, they're funding the construction of a de-watering plant that will deal with PFAS to the site. So, all the money that's due to the Navy going forward, actually will stay on the base and stay for the benefit of the base, it's sort of a, doesn't sound like much, but it's a really big deal to get the Navy to actually agree to take those monies and leave them here, and allow them to be used to clean up the base. They had obligations to clean up at PFAS, everybody's read about PFAS, we could go on for an hour, but that was sort of a big thing with them. So, that was sort of the second thing we did. We did redevelopment plan, there has to be under the state legislature number, this is property that is controlled by legislation, there was property under the legislation, it says you have to have a redevelopment plan, which talks about the various land uses, talks about a fiscal analysis, talks about infrastructure, talks about open space. We filed a new redevelopment plan with the SRA, the SRA voted and approved that in March of this year, so it was something that we had to do, and kind of showed, again, the hot pink is really the orange on this, we actually, Ricardo will talk about it, we wanted to create an open space buffer all the way around, and then we, the developable area is sort of shown in the tan color, that's sort of what the base redevelopment plan is. If you're on the next one, a little bit of timeline, and I hope, I know I'm kind of dumping a lot of information, but I thought it was at least you can kind of see this, January and March, redevelopment plan was approved by the SRA, March fifteenth, zoning in March twenty-ninth, we then went to Waymouth, Waymouth voted eleven to zero on June twenty-sixth to approve the zoning, so we could move forward through Waymouth. The next step is Abington and Rockland. We're also working in this timeframe, and have been with natural heritage, because natural heritage, there's box turtle, there's bird habitat out there, again, the reason why the land thing really did matter, if we didn't control the land, we couldn't satisfy the natural heritage permit, which L-Star defaulted on, didn't pay monies on, didn't do a work on, so we needed to get that landed. Town meet, go back, Paul, for a minute, I know I did very sensitive, the town meeting prep, obviously what we're doing now, and then Abington Town Meeting, October fourteenth, and then Rockland will be, looks like be the first week in the round, so that's, in a gross way, sort of the overall, overall timeline. Go to the next one, Paul. I'm going to ask Ricardo to do in five minutes or less, we thought it would be interesting, interesting to you to see a little bit about what the vision is, and sort of what you would do with the base now that you have it, and then really, on the fourth question, what it was, the land as it became, what it is today, and then what our thought is for the vision, because it does relate to the zoning and the overall piece, so Ricardo, turn it to you.
Five minutes or less?
Five minutes or less.
So, Ricardo DuMont, I'm from Queens in Boston, so we wanted to talk a little bit about, so what was there before, the base was there in, before the forties?
I'm sorry, I took your, I took your, I took your, I took your slide.
It's going to be five minutes or less. So, what to do with the land, so we want to talk a little bit about what was the land before the base, the land when the base was there, the land today, it's progressed as a development, a major development site for the three towns, and then the idea that we think would be the sort of binder or cohesive idea to join the perimeter open space with open space in the perimeter that sets the stage for future development. So, um, be stupid one. So, before, it was a great New England coastal property, about fourteen hundred, almost fifteen hundred acres, rolling, flatlands, lowlands were tended to be somewhat wet, major upland hill here, Huckleberry Hill, which plays into the development of the base, and you can see a major stream system that drains the north, the south, all the drainage in this area goes from north to south, into the stream to the south of us, and then, very unusually, the drainage on the east side, the tail over here, actually goes, drains to the north. So, that sets the stage for what happened in the forties, and that we needed to take the land for safety and national defense. So, in order to create basically a flat base, they took the hill that was here, which was a hundred feet tall, and created and basically filled all the areas here to create the flat runways. So, leaves are about three to five thousand feet long, and that fell from the hill, is used to grade that off and create the flat runways needed for the, to the Navy's concern. So, that exists today, and then the next era became the nineties, of course, when development brack came in, became a redevelopment site, and then we have the twelve hundred some odd homes that John was discussing earlier, here's the recreation center, and the new parcel development here, and of course, the east-west corridor for the site, throughout to the state. So, that's what exists today. Go ahead. So, one of the ideas that John had mentioned in the previous maps, there's this great perimeter open space that was basically untouched from the Navy. So, that, here's the coastal, the Coast Guard land here, the current development, and the northern open space historically was cut off from the southern open space by the, and only two pipes ran to the south to connect the north into the south. So, one of the big ideas we have is how do we actually reconnect the north and open space areas to the southern open space areas, both hydraulically, hydraulically and with open space. So, the idea is to turn the great runways that exist today into major open spaces, long meadows, as you can see here, to greenways. So, the idea, again, major landing strip, landing strip here, and at the hangar, which is right here, we're creating a new north-south green space that goes to this existing southern just open space here, and then that drains, of course, all to the south. This will carry drainage in the future plan, and also connect the open space, so there's access throughout the site. More importantly, it brings open space into the center, which is, of course, now, just a flat plain, mostly asphalt. The idea is that these, so what's the scale of this, this one here is three thousand feet long, it's the size of Boston Commonwealth Avenue, open space going from top to bottom, that goes from the hangar down to the southern open space, and these are actually even longer, they're about a two hundred to a hundred feet wide in place, so major open space connections of which, around which, we will build the various communities that will occupy the site, so that serves as a framework for those future communities. Is that less than?
Yeah, that was right.
Okay, one more, okay, so here's a better picture of that, so you can see the northern open space is the current existing development here, the recreation center here, here's the existing hangar, which we think is quite interestingly, and iconic for the site, so this first open space connects all the way down, again, that's three thousand feet long, same as Commonwealth Ave, this one's about five thousand feet long, that's a little less wide, and this one is going to be coming down this way, and we get to the environmental areas that John talked about right here. So, that sets the stage for future development to occur on each of these open spaces that form the basis of the new communities in the future.
One quick question?
Yes, of course.
Those meadows, are they going to be kind of depressed at all, or are they going to be...
Great question, and so you're anticipating the hydrology, so, in the core area, where we'll probably have the densest development in that area here, those will be flat and usable greens, as we get south of the parkway, then we can actually make them concave and actually use those for water storage and stormwater storage and development. Okay, so we've done estimates of all that stormwater capacity that we will need in the future. Is it?
It's good, you're six minutes, it's okay.
Six minutes.
Five minutes or less on zoning, because obviously, that's what really comes forward to you. We did take a look at the zoning that was, existed, it was fairly convoluted, it had all kinds of districts and areas, and what you could do in individual districts, we also talked to a lot of people who had tried to effectuate that zoning and use it, they found it very difficult to use, it was, we tried to simplify the zoning, and Tim Sullivan from Goulston will talk a little bit about sort of the map and the bylaw, that's what we just took through the SRA, took through Waymouth, and ultimately, obviously, we'll bring here into Abington, so, if you want to do a couple of minutes on that.
So, on zoning, a couple of things, so, just so everyone kind of recalls, the zoning at the base is approved by the three different towns individually, and then administered by the SRA. So, the redevelopment plan that John talked about a little bit was the first step in the approval, and now we're moving to implementing that. So, there's really two parts to the zoning, there's a zoning map and the zoning text. So, with respect to the zoning map, a few things, we retained all the existing zoning where development had occurred, so the completed areas in the magenta or the orange on the redevelopment plan, we created one consolidated open space district around the perimeter of the base, which lines up to the open space district on the redevelopment plan, and then created a mixed-use development district on the developable area of the base, the remaining area that's yet to be developed, so that's, that's really the highlights of the map, so, keep the existing zoning where developments occurred, create an open space, and then a new one consolidated open space, consolidated development district. With respect to the text, it's an amendment and restatement of bylaw, again, it implements the redevelopment plan, the general provisions around authority and uses and that sort of thing, those purpose, those all stay the same, you know, the rules of the road within those existing developed areas, those also stay the same. The major change of the new bylaw is to have an Article seven A, that's a mixed-use development district that governs this, the area yet to be developed, so, I'll just walk through the map briefly, and then I'll talk a little bit more about that text. So, on the left is the current zoning map, very inconsistent with the recently adopted redevelopment plan, lots of different overlays, lots of different existing, there's multiple commercial, multiple residential, multiple open space district, it's overly complicated, and frankly, it just hasn't worked. The zoning map on the right is what we're proposing, which, much more consistent with the redevelopment plan that Joan mentioned, and that the SRA unanimously approved earlier a couple months ago, the existing, the orange areas are those areas that Paul's circling now, those are the areas where development has occurred, and zoning staying the same. The green around the perimeter is one open space district, lines up to the open space on the redevelopment plan, and then the tan hashed area is the mixed-use development district, that's the area that's yet to be developed and is governed by our new district covered by Article seven A, so that's the zoning map, current on the left and proposed on the right. As part of the zoning process, you know, we'll go through public hearings, we'll talk a lot in detail, so this is really just a high level, but with respect to the district, you know, one of the big things is, it's one place to look for the rules of the road to develop what's left, as opposed to multiple overlays and overlays, it's one place to look, that's, that's an important piece. It encourages the development of a mix of uses, and it addresses, you know, as you'd expect, prohibited, allowed, regulated uses, all that sort of stuff, but it's supported by a package of master development plan materials, so, it has a master development plan, which is supported by an existing conditions plan, all sorts of reports regarding fiscal and traffic and stormwater and all, all of that, so it's a much more comprehensive, robust zoning than what was there before, and is supported by all those materials that we'll get into as we go through those, those processes, and the approval process is administered by the SRA, so if a piece of development comes forward, it has to prove that it's consistent with those materials, so. That's an overview on zoning, one thing I'd like to touch on briefly, this is really just to note that it's there, I know, we understand the town's working through compliance with the MBTA Communities Act, and this is just to note that distances from the MBTA station in Waymouth, so those radii are a quarter of a mile, a half mile, a mile, so there's three acres within a mile, excuse me, there's three acres within a half mile of the MBTA station, and about ninety-seven within a mile, so, you know, there's lots of complexities with compliance, this is really just to say, there may be an opportunity to work with the town to help the town comply, so we just, we just noted it, because the zoning would, would meet those requirements, so, that's zoning, I don't know if I hit the five minutes, but there you go.
Far more to come on that, but I'll give you at least a, a little, a little bit on that. Technical studies, we, you know, I'll just touch on three very quickly, water, because it's always a big issue, certainly in Abington, this is our spaghetti plant, it shows the various NWRA routes, you should know that the SRA and the town of Waymouth have, are preparing an application to become an NWRA community, the MWRA, Fred Lasky and others came out to meet with the Waymouth Town Council, Speaker Mariano also came out, it is an idea of effectively bringing water from, where the MWRA has it, because they have plenty of it, they, they effectively spill over about a hundred million gallons at a time of excess water, to bring it down from the Blue Hills, to get it down into Waymouth and the base, the reason the SRA is an applicant, the MWRA is to bring water to the base, the town is an applicant to bring the water to Waymouth generally. So, that, those materials, why it's a spaghetti plant, is there eight different routes that you could take, it really comes down to about two different routes, either through Quincy or Quincy and a touch of Braintree, why would you even have routes that brought you back through Randolph and around, because some of it goes to constructability, and it's not always the shortest route, sometimes it's, you know, maybe running a pipe in front of the South Shore Plaza is maybe not the easiest thing in the world to do, so that's one of the reasons there are the routes. In the south, and again, this was all part of MIPA filing, this, all this project has to go through MIPA, state review, all the state agencies, in its prior review, the other thing that was studied besides the MWRA was Aquaria, Aquaria's the D-Sale plant down, down in Dyton, that actually the city of Rockton controlled, it's a five million gallon a day plant, Rockton does not utilize all of that water, one of the other things we're charged with having to study is, what if, either through the east side of Rockton or where there's a thirty-six inch pipe in front of Peaceful Meadows in Whitman, what if water was to be brought up to the base, up Route eighteen? So, those were the two things that, I can't tell you there is a solution for the regional water supply issues, I can tell you, and I just wanted to show you very quickly, these are two things we're spending a lot of time on, we also worked at things like, can you lift water on the base itself, how much water can you lift, all that, which is not feasible, there's enough quantity there, but these are probably, when you look around this region, and this actually relates also to Abington, where is their water, there are two places that's water, the MWRA has water, and the Aquaria plant has water, those are the two places that have water today. Little bit of sewer, Waymouth, Rockton, Abington, just looking at, Abington, obviously, sewer flow is related to Rockton, you know, again, we've talked to your DPW commissioner, we've talked to your, your DPW member, we've talked to the sewer commissioner, it's still a work in progress, but how can the flow, which could be, you know, some amount of gallonage, how could we make that work for Abington, the same way we're looking at water, we're looking at sewer, to see what would have to be other INI things that can be done, are there coordination with Rockton, those types of things that we're looking at in sewer. Thirdly, stormwater, you asked a question about stormwater, Tetra Tech has done about a four hundred-page report on stormwater, we have to, we're solving, and this is probably the biggest difference between, difference between us... biggest difference between us and the four developers who came before us, and let's be honest, project has failed four times. We don't really want to make it number five. They never looked at this base holistically, they never looked at the transportation holistically, they never looked at water, sewer, or stormwater, how to actually solve all those things as an overall base. They always said, well, if I can get another 50,000 gallons of water, I'll build this much at the base. We're not going to do that, and we've said this publicly, and it is what we mean, we will not go forward unless we have a permanent solution for water and sewer. In the same way, designing the stormwater so it deals with the full development at the end of the day so that it all works. And more on that, but that's what Tetra Tech will do. Also looked at transportation. These yellow dots are the 72 intersections that we have studied. Again, looking at the complete buildout, and what does that mean, and what do we have to do at the various intersections. Give you a sense, what was shown in 2017, was originally shown in 2007 approval, and this is just done on a gross trip basis, 35,000 trips. What was shown in 2017 by L-Star were 80,000 trips, and that was shown, what we will probably bring forward is about 48,000 trips, we're a little bit in between, certainly closer to what the 2007 approval is. But what this means is, we've got about traffic signal timings about 10 locations, widening and other work at locations about 12, roadway widening is about four, traffic coming about four. We've identified about 30 intersections that would have to be remedied, and we have to work with Mastaut on all that, all as part of MIPA. I'll give you a sense of what's out there today. There's a permit for Route 18 that allows 500 trips for Route 18, as well as the 500 trips that go down Route 18. Virtually all the permits and approvals for this base all have to be redone, whether it's DEP, whether it's natural heritage, whether it's Mastaut, natural, all the things have to be redone, because none of them work. I'll finish up a little bit on this one. Money is always important as it relates to taxes and what happens to a community. As I mentioned early on, one of the things that were really unusual is we actually had an example to go look at and have RKG study, namely there are 74 homes that are there, how many schoolchildren are there, what's a commercial space? And then we said, study all that, study the costs for the community, study the gross revenues that go to the community, what is it there? And then also do an analysis, what if you built it all up? What are those revenues and costs, what does that look at? And we asked them to do it for all three communities, because we had actually a real-world example of the type of thing that would be built. So I'll just focus for a minute on Waymouth, that's the Waymouth breakdown. Sets value all, now because the only thing that's been built, built at Benway, about $400 million, gross taxes are about 5.3 million, offsets about $940,000 in costs, and that's your police and fire, all the costs that are there. They have bond payments over in Waymouth because of, related to the roadway. The net positive revenues after you adjust, and these numbers have been looked at, they focused in Waymouth, about 3.2 million. So it gives you a real sense of what can be generated by a certain level of development. We then asked them to look at, we've talked a lot about residential, but understand, I mean, we're commercial developers, we're not, I mean, yes, we do residential, but our bread and butter is commercial development, so we have them look at what we call 75% commercial, 75% residential. We said, do a weighted average if most of the development that happens on the acreage that's available here in Abington, Waymouth, and Rockland was commercial development. Do a weighted average if most of it was residential, 75% of it was residential. And what do the numbers look like? And you can see in Abington, we highlighted there about 4.2 million to 5.4, depending on commercial or residential. And everybody says, and when I first started doing this, and I'll tell you how many years ago, we said, well, we don't want residential, we don't want commercial, because that's where it's going to give the highest tax revenues. I would say that was true. That is not true anymore, especially depending on the type of housing that you're building. Our makeup of our, the people who live today is different, the amount of children that we have is different, it's just a different way of looking at, and that's why in some people, and we have a whole report on this, was done by RKG, that sort of look at, well, how could you actually have more if it's more residential than it is commercial? We certainly, as I think some of our early slides showed, I mean, we're in the life sciences business, we're, you know, we're in the hospitality business, we certainly think there's a lot of commercial development opportunity here, mixed with residential. But we wanted to give you a flavor of, well, which way could it go? And those are annual net reoccurring revenues, just to give you a sense of what that is. And I think, Paul, we have maybe one more, you know, a little bit, and it dovetails to one of the questions, why do we think the benefits of this? It certainly will stabilize the base community. This base community has been without a massive developer now for five years, and it shows. And it shows in how it functions, or how it doesn't function, problems that they've had with infrastructure, how it looks. Quite honestly, we're paying for extra details to be out there, to be able to deal with, whether it's the Brazilian kite festival, or the lawnmower races, which I didn't know about until recently, where people actually take rider mowers and race them, and which I thought, and lots of other things that happen on the base. Certainly, the long-term deficiencies I mentioned, all the local estate permits have to be redone, because none of them match actually, they don't match what existed today, let alone what you do on the base. The infrastructure challenges, we have to solve the water and sewer. We have to go through MIPA, we have to be able to get buy-in from everybody to do that. We don't yet have the solution for that, it's going to be a little while, but I wanted to show you just a touch, just a smidgen of what we're looking at. The open space and the permanent buffers, one thing that plan doesn't show there is we've actually added a buffer along the Coast Guard piece, because we didn't own or control the Coast Guard piece, we've added additional green buffer. Certainly flexibility, the zoning is flexible, we can decide where to put commercial and residential, that is true, and that's very different. If you try to program as they did before, well, this is where this type of commercial development is going to go, I'll tell you one thing, you got a recipe for failure, you will never guess right, the tenant will always want to be where you can't put them. That's one of the reasons this is by standard, and that is, we want to mention that. Now, obviously, the fiscal benefits in full build, if we do that. That's enough, I'm sorry. I hope I didn't take too much time, but I wanted to at least give you a little bit, you know, what are we going to try to do this year? Obviously, Waymouth, we mentioned in June, Rockland, Abington, hopefully by November, Natural Heritage, we're working a lot with them on the habitat issues. A lot of the land in Abington, in all candor, is turtle habitat, and it's going to be open space. It's not going to be for the moment. Some of what you saw there, most of it is actually going to be, remain in habitat. We're going to connect the habitat areas that are not there today, I'm going to show you just one more plan if I have your indulgence. Obviously, we'd love to work with you on the MBTA, the zoning will work for the MBTA, but the 60-40 rule and how that's going to work, a half mile, a mile, we'll have to work on that. We're continuing to work, as I mentioned, on infrastructure primarily, it's water. Transportation, we talked about, our goal, we have to redo the legislation, legislation calls for plans that development doesn't exist, we'll have to do that next year. So those are our things that we're focused on as we look to try to get this in place for 2024. And I'm just going to show, if you wouldn't mind, because it does matter to Abington very specifically, this is the 2009 conservation restriction. Everything that you see in green was restricted. That was where the golf course was going to be. And you can see, because you can see the Abington line, virtually most everything in Abington is part of that restriction, was going to be part of the golf course. Advanced slide up one to 2017, and you can see that that golf course idea went away, that the white line of developability came down for both Rockland and Abington and created a development opportunity. But here's some of the big issues with this. The stuff in white, and as it goes up to Rockland and come, the habitat doesn't work. Where the habitat is, and actually where, the turtles don't go in a straight line, they don't stay where you tell them to. And we've been tracking the turtles, actually, that's one thing they kept up doing, so we actually know, we have the second largest eastern box turtle population in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Now, I don't know if that's a claim to fame or not, but.
Tourist destination.
Exactly. I take a nice little gazebo.
Mostly tourist destination.
Mostly tourist destination, yeah, so it's not great. But one thing that we do with Natural Heritage is their view is, wait a minute, we want more of this land, but we want it in the right place, and we want it to be contiguous, because habitat is great if it's contiguous. Habitat is not great if it's chopped up. So then we go to the third plan, which is the idea of with Natural Heritage, in addition to the green buffer that's there, we restrict everything that you see there in green. And we make one big contiguous habitat opportunity, and that's what we're talking about Natural Heritage. Still working with them on that, but it's a very different, it's actually more acres than are restricted today, but it is a very different idea than what was out there.
How does Rockland feel about that?
How does Rock, because Rockland loses some of its developable land.
A lot of its developable land.
Yeah, but here's the idea.
Some people in Rockland will be very happy.
Well, but part of it is, though, it's got habitat in it. Okay, I mean, you know, yes, technically, under the permit, you could go and develop on it, but you really want to, you know, you really want to negatively impact the habitat. So that's part of it, but also the contiguous nature of it, that's what I meant, you know, turtles don't go in a straight line, you know, they move around, and so to create that actually creates the right kind of habitat and restricts the, I'm not, should restrict, out of the way. All right, that was my very end. Just Chairman, I'll turn back to you.
Any further comments on the board?
Oh, quite a few, actually. So, you know, everything we've heard about your group and your partner is, you know, you do stuff top-notch, you've done some great work, nobody has complaints about Pine Mills and Westwood and Cambridge Side. So you know this stuff pretty well. I'm curious, just because, you know, I drive around, 128 is being built out like bonkers. It's so expensive to build in Cambridge now, it's so expensive to build in greater Boston. And then you get down 128 towards, you know, southern 95, and it's just woods and woods and habitat and ledge and nothing else. And I can't believe there isn't an opportunity to start to lure some of those firms who are being priced out of that 128 belt down this way. Is this an opportunity for one of those types of plans?
It is. I mean, I think no great surprise, Massachusetts, if you listen to our current governors, you would tell you, we're 200,000 housing units short in the Commonwealth. Whether that number is right or not, there's no question, there's a shortage of housing. There are, the need for opportunities, certainly the life, I mean, we know the life science business pretty well, there are need for life sciences to have, you know, facilities that, I mean, average rent in Cambridge right now for an office research facility, lab facility is about $125 a foot. Triple net, that's what it is. Now, it's fine if you own that property in there, and you know, you show Cambridge Side, we think it's great there, but there are other opportunities where people can't, you know, absorb those kinds of dollars. We are on a T station, effectively, you know, commuter rail station, we are 14 miles out of the city. There should be opportunities for housing and commercial development in that corridor. And we think there are. Our issue has not been lack of interest in people wanting to be here and develop here. Our interest have been you don't have the infrastructure to support the development. I'll give you an example, we're doing a project up at the Manchester Boston Airport up in New Hampshire, and we're working with a life science company. Would be a great company to bring down here, their average manufacturing employment is, pays $96,000 a year, they would be a great, now, so they're a Swiss company, it'd be great to come down here. They know about this site. Problem is they need to lift a million gallons a day in water, because they were Moderna's vaccine maker, but they are Moderna's vaccine maker. Be great people to bring down here, those types of things. But everybody asks the question, what's the infrastructure issue? Transportation is relatively easy to solve, water and sewer is not.
Absolutely. If I could follow up with that. Wouldn't they, they wouldn't bring water in? They wouldn't tank their own water?
No, no, they need to lift a million gallons of water a day. So that's, it gives you, now, that's an extreme case, but there's a lot of people in the life, life sciences need two things, oftentimes, they need water and they need gas. And they, you know, that's, which again, is one of the challenges, because everybody wants to look to electrification, which we understand, but life sciences primarily need water and gas.
Well, they have gas lines everywhere. Because I look at what, you know, they're doing in Marlboro, I look what they're doing in Framing Hemetic, I look what they're doing in, you know, semi-success story in Debenhams, where they have 100 businesses out there. And this is just such a nicely located area, it's right off the highway, it's got a T station, it's got all these, I feel bad because it's not that there's a lack of brain power in South Shore, it's that all the brain power has to go elsewhere to work. So I'd love to be able to keep some of that.
Well, but if I'll give you an example, we started Westwood. Think about the office market, we have properties in Wallfam, the office market, oh, think about 128. The office market, so it was on 128. Why was it on 128 in Wallfam and in that region? Because most of the CEOs of those companies lived in Wellesley.
Yeah.
Wellesley.
Constantly.
That's where they live. Okay. Next movement down is Newton, starting in Newton, and what you see, we see the Trip Advisors and the other things, and there are offices, you've been on Wells Avenue, and sort of that all got developed, you sort of saw that. We had to double the time convincing them come down to the next level, which is Westwood. Now, we built Citizens Regional headquarters there, Dana Faber, we just closed on building the New Brain Cancer Center there, so we're doing both medical and office in that area. But it does come down slowly, but it is like dragging, you have to drag them along, that there are really things here, there's infrastructure here. And, you know, that is part of it. I think it's probably more of the commercial, more the Debenhams-esque kind of items that are there in life sciences for a site like this, but that's our size.
So, I understand you're asking us to grant you some flex, some flexibility with the rules. My concern is, are there guidelines, other bumpers, so that, you know, we don't go too far one way or another? You know, I don't think the solution is 100% housing, I don't think that's what you want to do, but I don't think that's what we want. I'm sure you can sell out the housing tomorrow, there's such a need for it, but.
Yeah, but that doesn't a community make.
Well, yeah, that's a stick.
I mean, one of the things that we promised the community that existed is one of our first items would be a town center, a commercial town center.
Yeah, okay.
Because you have to have that, you have, one of the, and the people who bought here, probably the biggest thing that we heard is, I never heard that I'd been promised, which was that idea of having a town center. I mean, it sounds silly, but to have the retail and have the coffee shop and the building they will go and, you know, to create that place, shopping markets, I mean, we brought Wegmans to Massachusetts, for example, we've done five of the six Wegmans in Massachusetts. But it's not that this necessarily would be Wegmans, I've been, give you a sense, you have to create that town center and that opportunity, and that will be one of the first things we do. Now, I have to tell you, it will be a loss leader for us, you know, just because there aren't enough people there, but it does create place, and we have to create place to be able to have, whether it's commercial or residential development, people want to know that there's something there.
Is there a commercial benefit for you to have commercial in this area? If the housing market is so strong right now, like I said, you could probably sell out a lot of that property very, very quickly if it's just residential. Is there a reason why it's better for you to also include commercial?
Well, sure. I mean, part, obviously, it's got what we do, I mean, you know, the piece of it. Commercial begets commercial, I mean, because that, you know, to sort of see that. Residential market, although it is hot, that is true, it does ebb and flow, you know, just sort of, it is a boom, but still is a boom bust, we haven't had a bust for a while. But we think a healthy mix of the two makes sense for us and will be a long-term, you know, commercial building. You can, usually you have less sort of infrastructure that you have to put in, in the sense of, you know, I've put a lot of streets, you know, I've put a lot of related, you know, water and sewer and other utilities, so usually has some size to it, so that you can, size it right, price it right, buy nets it correctly. There are advantages to doing large, I mean, when I first started, I would tell you, a very, very, you know, when the Mills Corp looked at this to do a million and a half square foot regional shopping center, I came down here with Bob Datus, who was my partner at the time, I was a young associate at the time, we went down and looked at that. That's what this site was originally slated to be, was to be a regional shopping center.
We've had, basically, this town has never experienced any real developer. We get all the small developers, and they take the easy route, residential. Even when they start off to build commercial on the first floor, they come back, oh, I can't get any commercial, can we put apartments in there? And we know by default that's what's going to happen, because it's, it takes work to go find commercial clients, whereas residential, you just kind of wait there and they come. That's what it seems like. So I think it's, you know, it's kind of be a rare experience for us up here to have somebody focusing on commercial. I've said a lot of times that, that, you know, that's the only way you get somebody that, if they don't, if they're not focusing commercial, they're never, it's never going to progress.
They don't have, quite honestly, the infrastructure internally with commercial brokers. I mean, we do, I mean, we have life science brokers, we have retail brokers, we have an extensive retail brokerage group, who are all, you know, employees and, you know, work down the hall from me. That's what, you need those folks. I mean, it is, it's an industry like anything else. If you're not in it, you don't know the players, it isn't going to work. So if a residential developer tries to get a retail piece in the base of their building, they're going to be talking to local one-offs, non-national tenants. You might, you might get lucky, but that's all it's going to be, you have to have a planned program to make it work.
I can ask one more question.
Absolutely.
I assume at some point someone has mentioned emergency access. Any thoughts, movement about how we can provide some sort of quicker access into the Abington[1759.04] land?
Yeah, two things that have sort of come up, you know, coming from the south, we go officially in South America, are coming in over the side as to one of the roads that were there. We're looking at both of those now to sort of see how that would be a direct access point.
Would it be an emergency crossing or would it be a permanent public opening?
You know, I, I don't know. I think we're going to spend a little time with the chief and sort of see where that, you know, where that comes out.
Where is this again?
Two spots to come, I don't know if you've got a plan. There was one coming, and I don't have the plane with me, I know I don't, but there was one that was a Navy road before that brought in access along.
It's by Coltark?
Adams Street.
On Adams Street.
Coltark, Coltark is where the chief would like to sit.
Yeah.
Yeah, sort of on the side and also coming up from the bottom is two places for, they're looking at.
Is that Spur Street?
Yeah. Spur Street's the other one.
Where that parking lot exists.
But that's kind of in an early stage, but that's with a discussion. How could we bring it in here? How could we bring it up for emergencies?
Okay.
Any other comments?
One of the other things I think we, a conversation I'd like to continue is the potential synergies with the MBTA zoning, which you touched upon very briefly. That's a whole other conversation in and of itself, so not tonight, but I, I think I'd like, we'd like to come back to that again at some point, because we've got deadlines to hit, decisions to make pretty soon ourselves.
I mean, our, our sense is, just very preliminarily, you know, there are opportunities to be able to qualify for the, you know, the more intense zoning because of disorder allows. And then in the second tier, there's opportunities. So I think that's, and the zoning would allow the density that is required, so if we can work and that assists the, the town on its long-term plans, great.
This is very busy.
I understand.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for taking the time.
Can I get a copy of the deck?
You sure can.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Would you mind if we put it on our, no, 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 social media sites?
Yeah, no, that's fine. And I'd encourage you, on the SRA website, all of our materials, all of our filings are all there too, so if there's, I mean, there's a market page stormwater report, there's traffic report, there's all kinds of things that are there, that's of any interest.
We've set up a page on our website and the link's right back for all your stuff.
If you want us to send links directly for all those types of things, happy to do that.
Okay, yeah.
Because just before you go, I just want to recognize Joe Shea. Joe, you had your hand up.
I knew I recognized him.
I remember your vibe before, your attitude. Two, I have several questions, but some of the financial need going on in a different environment. You're going to need, I said before, you're going to need more meetings, get ready for the town meeting. You're probably going to need to meet with some of the other committees in town, so you need to start figuring that out, which ones you need, you also need to meet with the selectmen. I don't know what you're going to need with the school committee, but you're going to need to probably meet with the zoning board and so forth, so you got to start figuring that in. And you probably need at least one general meeting for townspeople who attend, because I've been out before. One other question I have, and this goes back to what Rick brought up about public safety access. What's, maybe, what type of buildings are we looking for? Because that could be issue with our public safety capacities. I don't see if we have one lot, one, for that truck which is capable of going up multiple store, stories, I don't know how much, but that's something you may need to check over. And assuming may have the same problem as well. That the, we don't have as many large maintenance facilities. And if it's anything, if we require a special equipment, that's always a cost problem, it's also a time problem.
Those are, just, we'll do the, I'll take the first one, the meetings. We have talked and, and we've talked about having some community meetings even before we file formal in. And I thought is, we're having, I think we've got a department head meeting scheduled, open space advisory, you know, two, one or two community meetings to bring people out, so hopefully we'll get.
There may be specific committees you're going to need to meet with, and that's, could be a miles a community meeting, but it's also maybe different.
Yeah, I think we'd probably do those individual, individual ones. I don't, I don't think, because community meeting, you know, to get down in the weeds is hard to do, I mean, because people, you know, just talking generally. So I think we can do that. And I know we have a department head meeting coming up and a fire chief discussion, so I think we'll, we'll talk about those issues of height apparatus and access.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I mentioned some of my concerns I have.
I have to go grab them, 1423.
There's some interesting pretty pictures in there.
Yeah. But you got to make them come true. What's that? Windows? Something like a different screensaver there. Oh, they have some new windows on Mac, I. Oh, yeah, oh, hey, Mac, yeah.
All right, so they're going to use our easel.
Easel? What about the fan?
Thank you very much.
It'd be 6pm, more or less.
A little, a little past the hour.
I'd like to recognize the participants for a special hearing, special permit hearing and site review plan for 1423.
You have a camera in the safe area.
I promise you, we have nothing nearly as complicated as what you just saw.
Voila.
Public hearing notice, the Abington Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 10th, 2023, at 6:00 PM on the application of Elevated Roots 3 LLC, 25 Franky Hill Park, Franklin, Mass., 02184 for site plan review approval pursuant to the Town of Abington zoning bylaw, zoning bylaw, chapter 17577, site plan review and a special permit application pursuant to zoning bylaw, chapter 175243, special permit for retail marijuana facility located in the marijuana overlays. Property is owned by A M M LLC, 63 Beach Avenue, Paul, Mass., 02445. This property is located at 1423 Bedford Street, on Assessors Map 68 Lot 22. Plans can be reviewed at the Town Council's office, Bruce Hughes, Chair, June 26th, 2023 and July 3rd, 2023.
So before we roll into that, did you get the sheets from the newspaper?
Did I get the sheets from the?
From the ad?
No.
You guys didn't get that?
No.
They're called tear sheets?
Yeah, yeah.
And actually, I think they emailed them for you now?
Yeah.
You can send it to me tomorrow, I just want to make sure.
No, I'll double check. There's been that in the community ever since.
Would you like me to get this?
Sure.
Good evening all. My name is Michael Drive, I'm the senior project manager with Allen Engineering. Here this evening on behalf of Elevated Roots 3 LLC, and joining me, behind me is Catherine Thalby of Tenac Strategies. The applicant was unable to be here unfortunately, he's on a plane as we speak. If there are any questions that Catherine and I cannot answer, we will certainly find answers for you in terms of how the operation is proposed to function. But allow me to walk you through the engineering aspects of the project. Is everyone generally familiar with the location of the site as shown on the aerial photograph here? Okay, I'm just going to flip right on to the, we'll zoom in here on the existing conditions, spend a minute on that. So north hour here, run that way, Bedford Street across the bottom of the page. The site is about 1.35 acres. It's located within the Business Development District and is also read into the record in the Marijuana Overlay District. There's currently a single-story building which contains about 15,500 square feet. There are three tenants in that building now, in the left corner, Work Play CrossFit, which is actually in the process of being moved out of the building. There's the Battleground Games and Hobbies in the front portion of the building here, and then in the remaining part of the building, Arroyan Custom Storefronts. Again, that's about 15,500 square feet. Access to this site is via a single curb cut, difficult to see on this plane, but, and of course, as you know, DOT recently completed improvements along the frontage of the site, pavement, new granite curving sidewalks. There was some discussion about trying to alter that infrastructure. We talked the client out of that in a hurry, just because it is new DOT infrastructure. So I'll show you in a moment that we're going to utilize that existing curb cut. There are 24 paved parking spaces on the site today that currently serve the three uses that I spoke about. What else in terms of vitals? The site is predominantly paved, about 75% of the site is impervious. There are no formal storm art controls on the site other than riprap, sort of velocity dissipators that line each side of the site. There's a steep embankment to the north that rises up away from the site, and then the grades fall away on the south side of the site. There was some impact to some of the parking here when the taking was done for the improvements along Bedford Street, that did truncate some of the parking spaces a little bit, so under existing conditions, there are some parking spaces that are considered pre-existing, non-conforming. So we're here this evening to see permit coverage for the full build of the project, but we thought it would be prudent to detail out the project as it's proposed in two phases. The first phase entails retail only, which I've boxed out of the plan. That space would take the, the place of the CrossFit use that's there today. This particular use, mix of uses with Phase 1 marijuana retail requires 38 parking spaces. So as I mentioned previously, there are 24 on the site, so we would supplement that to get us to 38 parking spaces. With Phase 1, we're not proposing any site work. It would simply be to re-stripe what's there today. There's an existing concrete ramp that provides access to the manufacturing portion of the site, that would remain. There's existing accessible spaces that would remain. We would simply just reutilize some of the paved areas and stripe it a little bit more efficiently, stripe some parallel parking spaces along the southern side of the building, again, to get to 38 parking spaces. That would just be an interim condition under Phase 1. I don't have an exact timeline, but almost on the heels of that, it's the applicant's intent to take over the entire building from the current owner, and the retail would remain, the rest of the building would be, question.
The parking on that side, which we're talking about?
Yep.
That implies that the traffic flow would be around the back and, and out this way?
Yes, yes. That would generally be yes, because the parallel spaces would be on your right, that would be the natural flow of traffic. And we are limited in terms of the width of the site, the existing building, we were able to achieve 20 feet, which is minimal for fire access as well. Any other questions?
I had seen on one of the plans that there was, is there a loading dock proposed for the opposite side?
There, I'll get to that in a moment, yeah.
Okay.
In fact, let's just do that now. Any questions in terms of Phase 1? Again, no site work proposed, we're not turning a stone over, we're really just re-striping the parking lot so that we can provide the proper amount of parking for the mix of uses. So let's go to Phase 2, or the full build plan, if you will. So just to answer your question, there is a new door proposed here that's an overhead door, that would serve the delivery component of the project. Sprint-type vans are utilized for delivery, they would.
Sprint-type vans?
Yeah, they're small vans, yeah. They're not.
Yeah, it's going to be safe. If it was anything large, that turning radius would be pretty tight.
Absolutely. And we, we, we thought of that very early on, and we put a turning template on there, there's plenty of room for that to maneuver, but any vehicles bigger than that would not be able to access there. So just to back up a little bit, this is the full build. The shaded areas that you see, the gray shading, is the new pavement, that would just be an overlay or middle and overlay. So there is a little bit of site work here. For Phase 2, there's 37 spaces required, actually one less than Phase 1, just because of the mix of uses and how the parking math works out. So what we would do here is to remove that existing ramp that I pointed out earlier that's sort of ugly and right in front of the building. We would propose a new concrete sidewalk along the entire frontage, re-stripe and reconfigure all of the parking, repave where the shade is just along the front. The shading in the back, there's a, there's a sort of a gravel area there now, we would pave that. But important to note that we would also remove pavement. So there's currently a vehicular connection right here to the use to the north, you can faintly see the current line here. So right now, vehicles are able to do this. We're going to take this up and provide landscaping in that location. We're going to provide the required 10-foot landscaping that is currently missing from the site today. So we're going to add about 1,200 to 1,300 square feet of planting area, impervious area to the site. And I can detail that a little bit more, just to show you what it looks like from a landscaping standpoint. That's the grading, so my, very minor grading, just so the site drains, and actually, while longer, DOT certainly does not want a drop of water to enter their jurisdictional right-of-way. No water enters it today, so, but what we've done here is just kind of sweep these contours around the creative alley, so that all the water from the front parking lot will go where it continues to go today. I mentioned previously, there's a riprap strip along the southern edge, we're going to supplement that, it's an additional riprap, just to slow velocities down in larger storm events. You'll see accessible parking formerly proposed in the front with all of the signage, we're making sure that it fully complies with ADA, no grades will exceed 2% in any direction. And finally, the landscaping and lighting plan. And as I mentioned, as you can picture today, there's really nothing along the front, it's all paved. DOT put new curving in, right up to the existing parking. But under your bylaw, a 10-foot strip is proposed, so we're trying to honor that, so we're going to soft cut and introduce a landscape strip. You can see trees that we're adding along the frontage, where no vegetation exists today. The lighting is very straightforward, I provided cut sheets and I provided foot candle illumination levels around the building, just a series of wall pack lighting, it's just for minimal safety. There's no intrusion of light off the site. Quite frankly, all the surrounding uses probably have more light, with the exception of the gravel operation. But very low-level lighting, 12-foot mounting height.
Landscape area?
Yeah.
So there's the proposed tree, deciduous trees in there, the ones in the, in the southern corner? Yeah. Is that in riprap?
It is, it is, which is totally fine. We're able to plant trees in riprap, we do it all the time. The rip, the trees can truly grow in the riprap, and the riprap, again, is only there to reduce velocities in a larger storm. So there, there will be riprap here, just to accept that runoff, and then this will be more of a mounted, you know, typical landscaped area. But we didn't want to lose the opportunity to plant another tree within the riprap.
The wall packs, they need a cutoff lens. It's not so much that the light intrudes, it's the fact that it's, you can see it.
Yeah, I believe, oh, you mean the actual source of light?
Yeah.
We can certainly specify a cutoff. These products that I typically specify have cutoffs.
Okay. Trees, I mean, are they really trees or are they just technically trees?
No, we plant the plant, actual shade trees there, to shade the, the paved areas.
Drive by a lot of places with something that qualifies as something growing, and that's where we end up.
Yeah, I understood. These are typical two and a half to three and a half caliber breast night trees. We envision probably maples, deciduous trees that will provide some shade, but their canopy won't grow into the right-of-way.
We would look for older trees.
What will be out back when fully built out? Let's say your plan is, you take over, you're doing cultivation and you're doing manufacturing, what's going to be out back of the building?
So I don't know if you're familiar with what's out there now, it's, the edge of pavement is right here. The current tenant is using that area for equipment storage, there's some trailers stored there. We really have no plans to utilize that, we don't need to pave it. We envision just stabilizing that area as another means to reduce runoff from the site. There's really no need to utilize it for structures or parking or anything like that.
No, the only thing you need to allow for is the fact that, as we said, traffic flow will be around the back of the building, so that the vehicles on that side that are parking will loop around the back.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if it's, if it's mud, it's a problem.
So what we have, and that's a great question, great point, we have 26 and a half feet clear from the edge of the parking, to the existing edge of the pavement. Typically, a drive aisle is 24, we have 26 and a half, so more than enough room for cars to maneuver.
Question, I have a question about, I've noticed that all of these, there's, when the people go in, they're not shopping, they already know what they want, and it's like a 10-minute, it's like going to Dunkin' Donuts. I've seen in Caravana, cars in the parking lot backed up 10Q inside the lot and out on the street. The buds, they could use a term. they could use a turn-out lane, because anybody, anybody that pulls slows down and pulling the buds causes a traffic problem that they're almost getting run into. Well, guess what I'm seeing is that there, it's like, it does look like it's a 10-minute thing. At the Moise Park, walk in, walk out. I'm just curious about, about, I can see that's an issue, actually, I can almost see that this turning into a, not today, but this turning into a drive-through business. I can't imagine that, we're too far away from that to be practical. So I guess the question is, I guess, well, how will you address cars that are, have to wait for a park spot, someone backing up? Because someone's going to be pulling in, two people will be backing up at the same time and
Yeah, so quite frankly, we don't see the demand, and please add to this if you can, add to it. We don't see the demand with so many of these retail facilities coming online. What you described certainly was the case when these things were brand-new, I mean, police details were needed to manage these things. We don't find nearly the demand now, and I've done dozens of these. I'm not sure if what you were describing is a recent phenomenon, but
It happened in, but the Rockland one, the cap's longer than others, but
So these days, since COVID, most businesses are implementing online ordering. And most customers we see are taking advantage of the online ordering before, instead of walking in and, you know, shopping. So 10 minutes would be the absolute upper end of an estimate of a time spent in the store. For most of the customers who are doing mobile pickup, they're in and out within, like, conservatively, five minutes, because if there's a line inside, you just never know, but it's a very quick turnaround, the orders are ready before the rounds are waiting around in the store, so it doesn't change that people would be coming in and out frequent, or the same level of frequency, but the time spent in the store would be a lot lower than 10 minutes.
This does look a little different, like, it looks like someone's waiting to leave and drive out onto Route 18. Has a little, doesn't feel the pressure to get pushed out there.
Yeah, we did try to provide a little bit of queue there, just the site geometry limits exactly what we can do.
We're getting rid of those middle parking spaces still a lot.
Yeah, and if you can, there's actually 42 feet. There was no way to really configure this front lot to make it any more efficient, so what we decided to do is again, add the landscaping, but there's a full 42 feet between trays. And typically, that's only 24 feet in like a retail scenario. There's a lot of room for people to make decisions and maneuver.
So a couple of questions for me. One, I'm sad that, to hear the battlegrounds might be moving out only because that place is a hotspot on the weekend nights. I mean, you drive by there on a Friday and Saturday night, that place is banged out every single weekend, it's incredible.
Okay.
Even during COVID, I mean, it was, you know, as many people are at, like, you know, Barrett's.
I brought my son there, they're, it's serious.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know if they have good places to move to, but
I don't know either, we can, we can try to find out for you.
I'm just curious, because it's
They usually be down the road, at the Walker Farms, usually.
So the second question is, I guess this may be more for Liz, just to refresh my memory. Why did we make our friends on Adam Street tire subsurface?
We did not.
They offered to?
The fire department required it due to the way to the truck.
Okay. So they had, they had to do subsurface stormwater?
Well, they had to do the stormwater and they were going to do that in a phase later when they paved. But the fire department required that they paved the parking lot before they could open, so they had to do the stormwater.
So why did they have to do the stormwater?
Because they were adding all that impervious surface.
If you like, I can address that even more if you like.
Okay.
So we're not under Conservation Commission jurisdiction, if we were, even though we're reducing impervious, we would have to do, we'd have to show that we're meeting the standards to the maximum extent practicable. We don't have that situation, there are no wetland resources within 100 feet of the site, or nowhere near the site, actually. And we're reducing the amount of impervious, so inherently, we're increasing infiltration and reducing stormwater runoff.
And they were doing the opposite, because that was gravel.
It was gravel.
And they were paving.
If we, for instance, wanted to pave the back, we would have to mitigate that with a stormwater management system.
Just making sure of all our new rules that we're keeping it even or requiring of our computing businesses. I guess one of the issues I have is that whole area is just a disaster in terms of central planning, it's just an absolute disaster. And it's not your fault, but it's just, this is how it's looked for 40 years at this point. So anything that can be done to improve, you know, curb repeal would be appreciated. And we have the same requirement for your neighbors two doors up, that they just put a lot of money into plant trees and repave and everything else to make that difference. Buds spruced up the front as much as they could. Green Harbor, if they ever build, it's going to look, we require them to put landscaping in as to the extent possible. So yeah, as much greenery as we can put onto that area, I appreciate. Because it's just, it's a disaster up there right now, it really is.
It is sorely needed.
Yeah, it's just, there's no breaks in between property lines. There's nothing, it's just a wasteland.
But you can go fast now.
So, I, the answer to the question is, so in the first phase, in Phase One, I guess maybe it's not as much. How many parking spaces do you really need? Like, put our bylaws aside, how many safe spaces do you really need? Because buds, you know, from what I hear, because I've never actually been there, of course, is that there's always five or six cars, but never anymore. Maybe like the night before Thanksgiving, you know, there's a bush.
We would agree with that.
Yeah.
We would agree that, unfortunately, we have to comply with zoning, right?
Well, that's what I'm asking, is if zoning rules were different, how many spaces do you think you'd really need for, you know, full build-out?
In Phase One, being the retail component anyway, I would say to be safe, we probably want around 10 parking spaces, less than half is than what is required under zoning.
In Phase One, you'll have the other retail business that's still in operation, right?
Well, the other, right, right, so there would be, we would say safely 10 spaces for, for the marijuana use, which would be more than probably twice there, you know, you mentioned five, that's probably realistic.
Yeah, and the retail use is the one that would require the most parking spots, because the manufacturing, just, it would just be employees, so you wouldn't have customers coming in for that.
But you did mention about the game store as well.
But the gaming place gets banged up at night. So maybe you'll have four or five people at eight o'clock at night cross over, but I mean, it's
I believe the proposed hours are to close around eight, it's either eight or nine. I'll work into that, though.
But either way, I guess, I think we're, I think the board tends to feel a little bit like, we don't need the parking, we just adopted a bylaw about this, if we don't really need the parking and we can keep it a little bit greener, we're okay having that conversation, so.
As long as it doesn't spill out into the street.
Well, that, and that's the caveat, is that, you know, it's kind of also buyer beware, which is that, all right, we'll give you less parking, but if it's a problem, then you have to deal with it.
Sure, you're, I guess what I'm hearing is that during Phase One, it would probably be beneficial to keep all the parking because of the game store, which sees a fairly sizable demand. But Phase Two, where you just have the small retail and the rest is manufacturing, perhaps that's where there could be a reduction
Yeah.
in parking, in more, you know, green space.
Yeah, and again, then it becomes, all right, if you are seeing those backups into the road, well, then it's your responsibility to fix the problem.
Yeah.
But if you are telling us, I think, am I speaking to the board?
No, I just heard somebody screaming and I was like
I guess you've really heard that, what you're saying, it really depends on the site.
Yeah.
Caravana is, as I said today, is an example of, let's not build it that way again. Because they got cars in the street, they got cars piled up, every single parking spot is full. And, you know, that's at three o'clock, I don't know, and I notice, I notice when my daughter leaves, I can tell when Bugs, Bugs opened up till 10, I was like, must be getting close to 10, I gotta leave. Everybody leaves the house to go off to Bud's.
Bud's is never in fall, except for literally the night before holidays.
So, you know, and it's very unfriendly, it's like walking into a prison. Don't stand over here, you're standing right here and not looking at anything.
So my office, I literally look out my window at a marijuana dispensary and I watch it all day long. Because it's interesting to me, because it's what I do, a big part of our business. And it's amazing how there's a high turnover, but it's always those just five or six spaces closest to the door, turning over constantly, never is the parking lot full.
Are you seeing a time period develop? Where you see people start to go?
It's really, at least the one in Hope Dale, where my office is, it's a steady, a steady turnover all day long. But it's never, it never peaks beyond that five or six cars.
Okay.
I guess the other part is, what we're hearing is that the supply market is starting to get a little flooded. So, now, the owners of this have two other stores in Halifax and Kingston, correct?
Yes.
Would this manufacturing only serve those stores? Or is it, like, did this one reserve in case they need it down the road?
So the way that manufacturing or cultivation, which is not obviously in question here, but manufacturing, they would supply to themselves, but they would also be able, and I'm not, I can't speak to what the exact plans are, but they can sign wholesale agreements with any other dispensary in the state, only within the state, to supply products to them. However, obviously, any type of business like this would be limited by, like, their own size. So if it's not necessarily the largest manufacturing operation that I've personally seen, so it wouldn't be going all over the place, but it would not just be serving itself. It would be supplied to any other retailer who did buy products from other manufacturers and didn't make them themselves.
Can I ask you, because I've heard of that happening west, there's one state that can grow it, the other state can't, and they're flooding the state with illegal, you know, product. Yeah, but is that happening here? It doesn't, is that, that's not
It's, there is a bit of, the illicit market is not being, I guess, deterred statistically speaking, as much in Massachusetts by legal operations as much as it is in other states, just because of the way the different laws are working, but there, the sort of source of that, whatever is being sold on the illicit market is not clear the way that it's clear in other states. Like, we know that illegally in New York, they're seeing a lot of California products coming in. But that's not really happening here to that in the same way.
Yeah, I'm just curious about that. But a lot of the cultivators and manufacturers are not, kind of, there's a little too much supply, is what I understand of the industry right now. So that's not a definite, but it's a possible down the road that they would use that for manufacturing.
That would be Phase Two, is the manufacturing, yes.
Okay, there's no timeline for that, a year, 18 months, two years, three years?
The goal is, and correct me if you know otherwise, last I spoke to the applicant, they want, they want that to happen as soon as possible.
Okay.
But it's critical that they get this first phase in place. They need to work out the details with the existing owner so that they can take ownership of the whole building and fit out for manufacturing.
So if they don't work it out with the owner, what happens?
I think they've already, they already have an MOU, it's just the details and timeline that has to be worked out.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I understood in part from your earlier answer that the applicant's other two locations, neither one of those is manufacturing? It's just retail?
Correct.
That cakes is grow.
Cultivation.
Yeah, that's cultivation and retail.
And then Halifax is just retail.
Okay. So this gets back to one of the questions that came up about water.
Yep.
And so, kind of, perhaps the confusion implicit in that question was the difference between manufacturing and cultivation?
It's immense.
So, you know, it may very well have been, when I saw manufacturing, I thought cultivation.
Yeah.
Totally understand.
Yeah, yeah. It's a fraction of water use, so I did run some numbers, because you were kind enough to forward me some questions, one of which was water use. So under exist, the water use at this site is very low. What I did was I ran Title V design flow estimates for both existing and the two phases. We will be reducing water use by about 50% with the ultimate build-out, because the gymnasium actually is the highest user for this facility. Manufacturing's very low, retail's very low. So it's about, and these are estimates, it's about 1,200 gallons per day under existing, it will be under full build, about 500, so less than half.
That's good.
Because it's not cultivation, it's manufacturing.
Yeah, the applicant wanted to do cultivation here early on and had some informal meetings with the town, and that door was slammed in a hurry because of the water.
Sure. That's a big, it's a big issue.
Yeah, it's a huge issue.
I thought, I remember our facility talking about coming here and they had to bring, they were bringing their own water and they weren't going
They were going to bring, they haven't even opened yet, that was nap.
Who was that?
Nap.
Host of problems as well, if it's a public water supply, it needs a protective radius. You need a lot of site area to accommodate that, so that's just not something that's going to work here, certainly.
Yeah, they were going to bring water trucks in.
Oh, water trucks.
Water trucks.
Wow.
Yeah.
Recycle, et cetera.
Yeah, recycling, yeah.
We're not here to review business plans.
So just to let you know, there was a miscommunication with Dave and there is not a review by him available.
I could practically hear him talking, though.
Can you?
Yeah.
Maybe through me? So we had a conversation this afternoon and I explained that, you know, it's obviously up to you guys, but that there's not a lot being done site-wise. As you saw, at the end of the day, it's just, at the end of the day, taking up pavement and adding landscaping and moving some other stuff around and
In the second phase?
Yeah, yeah, so even in Phase One, it's not much.
It's apparently not doing anything in Phase One, right?
Yeah, typically, peer reviewers or engineers review stormwater, we don't have a stormwater management plan, so.
So he said that he will get on that this week and he will have it done by the end of the week, and if you wanted to approve it conditionally based on what his review is, that's fine. Where you guys can do what you want. The only other thing, did you happen to find that, that got advertised?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, I just, as long as you forward it to me?
Yeah.
For the file, that's fine, and the traffic memorandum.
Yes.
This, this
Glad you brought that up.
This would only be a vote on Phase One, Phase Two is a whole
It's actually the vote on the whole plan, because they've submitted the whole plan. And the second part of the plan is the replacement of pavement with plantings.
So let's go back to where Rick was headed with parking, is that something that could change everything? If he's going to be, wants to reduce parking, is that where you were going?
Basically, yeah. At the trade-off, it's important space.
So that would have to be an amendment, because they didn't ask for that right now, so you can't
I get that.
Right, so they can't, you can't do that tonight anyway.
It probably says in the plan, how many parking spaces do you need for employees?
It's broken, it's not broken down for employees, it's just a total number that I need.
Thirty.
Thirty-seven for Phase Two. And so what we envision is employee parking to the south side and to the rear, and then patrons would use the front lot. Makes logical sense.
Yeah.
So unless there are other questions, I can just address the traffic. So at the time we made our submittal, as far as I could tell from reviewing your zoning bylaws, a full traffic impact and access study is not required, but it does require trip generation, so. And that in turn determines whether we're talking about a minor project or a major project. So we submitted fees, what we thought was conservative, for a major project. And the threshold would be 400 new trips. We do exceed that, and we were all actually surprised by that. You'll see this memo is dated today. So the man has been working hard. And so the delta on Phase One would be 714 trips. And the delta on full build would be less than 600 new trips. So still a very low generator in terms of the setting and the carrying capacity of Route 18. But again, just a little bit more than what we had thought. Certainly don't need to discuss fees, because we've already provided fees based on a major project. And I apologize for handing you this during the hearing, but we just got it today. We didn't expect big numbers, these again are a little bit bigger than we expected, but they're still not large numbers. One of the things that to know is ITE, the manual that traffic engineers use to generate their numbers. I don't think they yet have IT, ITE numbers for the delivery component. We all, as professionals that reviewed this, who have been doing this for a long time, really think these numbers are conservative. I certainly do think they're conservative, and just for an example, the retail component is about 4,000 square feet. 600 of it is a mezzanine space, a small mezzanine space. We could probably call that something other than retail and actually chip away at these numbers, but this is probably the worst case that you would ever see. It's very conservative.
Yeah, I mean, looking at like, you know, an extra car turn peak every three minutes, yeah, that sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, like, the way that delivery works, it's not, like, we were talking about this this, um, not like pizza delivery, someone coming in and out like every, you know, twenty minutes is...
Yeah, they load up and they...
For the whole day, or, you know...
A delivery truck, yeah.
So the trips you just mentioned, it sounds approximately correct, but I, I think that that's even conservative.
Yeah, I agree.
Do they, I'm curi, I'm just curious, do delivery people travel by themselves or they have a partner?
They have two.
Oh, okay, I kind of wondered how they deal with the element that wants what's in their truck.
Yes.
And if they get in an accident, that's like a whole process they have to go through.
And the pizza truck pulls up and...
Right, well, there you go.
Everybody's just partying in the street.
Yeah, it's a very secure process.
It's heavily governed.
Mm-hmm.
Heavily governed, yeah.
To put it lightly.
Yeah.
Personally, I wouldn't feel comfortable approving, and I don't have a general problem, but I wouldn't feel comfortable until we do have a chance to have it reviewed. I don't expect anything, but I think it's just, without having, I don't know what, I don't know, so I guess, is what I'm saying. Or it might feel differently, but I would prefer just to wait.
Let me hear a little bit more about the phase two people. What are they, how many people were working there? Are you talking like two, three, or four, five, or, how many people do you think work in the...
Uh, I would, I would think that would be, I don't know if you have an actual estimates from the applicant, but it would, my guess, just because of my experience with these types of facilities, that it would be maybe six, seven people in the manufacturing.
Okay.
And that might be conservative.
Yes, so the, the operation, I'm just hoping to find the page that I think I have, the operation, a lot of it is automated, it's not necessarily like assembly line of people, so with the scale of this and with the fact that it is just the manufacturing and not cultivation, it would not require a ton of people.
Delivery trucks, how often do they leave here?
I don't have a good sense of that.
Again, that depends, it depends, and it, like, the data in general is kind of lower on that because delivery is fairly new, but the limit on, a delivery truck can have up to ten thousand dollars worth of product in the car at a time, and they have to complete every delivery before they return to the warehouse. And that, just that number can be broken down in a bunch of different ways depending on what's being ordered.
Where they're going, yeah.
Uh, yeah, on a busy, probably on a weekend, you would see a couple more delivery trips, whereas on a weekday, it really depends, you...
If just a few, that's fine.
...give you a number, because I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, a few, it was just, I don't know how often they...
Yeah, I mean, certainly not like seeing vans coming in out of the Amazon facility.
Well, yeah, well, that's what I want to look at, because if phase two is more, I'm more interested in phase two, because that's when it's all about, that way with the parking all changes and...
Sixty days that they're looking to get in.
But to be honest, I, other than knowing with exactly, I don't know, I guess I really don't have a problem with it, because it's such a limited facility up there.
If you want, don't shoot the messenger, but we could meet next Monday.
The difficulty with waiting for a date before we take any action is that we've got, normally we go to August off.
I just feel that this was...
It's been about sixty days.
I mean, for what it's worth, if I could just offer this, I certainly understand your concern, I respect that as a planning board member for years. One, the plan is very, very simple, and two, if you did decide to conditionally approve it, we would immediately turn around and set a plan that addressed any concerns. You know, I already heard about cutoff shield on lighting, made note of that.
Could we do this, could we approve it, this site plan for phase one, and then just pick up any little remnants for phase two September? I mean, if you have phase one approval, does that kind of give you the ability to move forward?
Well, I guess what I, am I hearing that we would have to refile? Because we are asking for primary coverage as one project.
Okay.
We're showing you sort of the interim step.
Well, there's one contributor to what you're asking, asking about is the proposed grading, it looks great, but I'd rather have somebody that's going to sit down and run calculations, that would be the one thing, and his personal opinion on that. Drainage is the only issue this town has, well, parking, but it's really the only issue left is draining. It looks sensible to me, but it's just a drawing on paper for me.
Yeah.
If David Johnson could do the review by this by Monday, we could meet on Monday.
I'd, I'd come in, yeah.
And discuss this again, that way you get your answer in relatively short term, rather than wait until September.
Yeah, to your point, most of it seems to be pretty straightforward, I wouldn't anticipate he's going to come back with...
Any much of anything.
All kinds of...
I would be shocked, but I, I understand your comment too, you're not, you know, maybe you're not all well-versed in looking at proposed grading, uh, because a lot of people aren't.
Well, I'm looking at it, but I can't, I can't do the math in my head of how much water hits that surface at that degree and how much is going to collect into it.
Well, generally speaking, they're reducing the amount of impervious, so we'll be reducing the amount of water that runs off the site. The grades we're showing is really just to make sure that water is sort of bold and it doesn't enter the right of way and it exits the site where it does today.
Oh, I see, so you're not, you're pulling the gr, okay, now I can read the light grades, so you're just pulling the grades back and contouring them?
Yeah, if you see the, you see the curvature and the contours, that's just to create a slight valley to make sure that water stays on the site and doesn't make its way into Route 18.
Yeah, Route 18 is one fifty-eight, okay, so it's higher.
I don't have a problem conditionally approving it, if there's any changes at all, to come back and see us.
I, I...
I don't have a problem.
When you say changes, we would be able to address any comments, minor changes, but I think what you're, correct me if I'm wrong, any, anything major that came out of it?
Right.
That would require some sort of amendment.
Right.
Yeah, it'd be a different animal if you were adding on to it, but it's the same building, it's a pretty new building. I don't have a problem.
And if Dave has any major concerns, they, they need to come back. It's pretty simple, straightforward site. So the way this is going, I think if we approve this tonight and David, if you've got a chance to review it, and he had any issues, guys can come back and see us.
On next Monday, or would that be September?
So, Dave is going to get the review done this week, and I'll let you, I'll send you his review letter as soon as we receive it, but I think what they're saying is that if there's anything major, like the grading isn't right, or the striping isn't right, or any of that stuff that would, you couldn't do the parking that you're planning to do, or any of that kind of stuff, that you'd have to come back in September. Am I paraphrasing that correctly?
Yeah.
But that anything else, minor stuff would be okay?
Yeah, that introduces a kind of a subjective...
You took the words right out of my mouth.
Just make it for Monday.
Yeah, how do you...
You want to just make it for Monday?
I do not, but I will.
Do you want to phone in?
I'll be here.
Can I throw a reminder?
No.
Well, just considering we have, we're going to have a special time meeting in October, and we're going to have two issues on there that we still need to discuss and review, do we need to meet in August?
No, because this board is not responsible to sway the town's people to approve that zoning at the airbase, that's up to them, and your public hearing on that is going to be September eighteenth, because the warrant closes on the thirty-first.
Okay, so we don't need to do any sort of work on it in August?
I, I don't think that's up to the planning board, I think it's up to the SRA.
I mean, it's our, it's town zoning, are we sponsoring the article?
We'll have a joint meeting with them, and you'll make a recommendation to town meeting.
Oh, whether we agree?
Whether up or down, I, I don't think it's your job to sell the package, right? And they're going to have some community meetings, and you guys should feel free to go to those.
You just have to back up your, why the board made its opinion, that's it, yeah.
And what approval rule, if any, do we have with the fire station project? Because we had a review with a high school project, but I don't know if that was required under MBSA.
This is just for the money, right? Do they have plans?
Supposedly this week they're finalizing.
Yeah, they would have to go through site plan review, although...
They can get around us very easily, you know, they can go right...
Well, that's where I get confused, is some, some things get done without needing site plan review, and some things do, so...
So, I will check the town manager on that. I would assume they would come to us, but that would be September eleventh, that they would have to do that.
Yeah.
And maybe we could move that to a bigger forum, so more people could come.
It would be kind of a courtesy.
Just want to make sure not to cut you off.
No, that's a month ago, and that, and if, and if there's, if it's messy, they can come and play on the eighteenth.
Okay.
Right?
I guess they don't need a site plan permit to have a town meeting vote or an election, so...
No, they don't actually. They don't, yeah, so all of that stuff was done for the, like, police station, the money was allocated and all that stuff at a town meeting with them, yeah.
Okay.
Now, you guys got MBTA communities. That's what, what you're going to be charging into the following. All right, so...
We need to close the hearing.
I would not do that, just in case, because you're going to continue it till Monday night.
Is the owner going to be here if we do that? I'd like to hear what he has to say.
I will have to check, I know he's out of the country right now, heading out of the country. We will bring him in if we can. Do you have specific questions?
No.
I guess I'm okay with that, I just, I just feel like, and I know it's because we're not meeting in August, I feel like it's, we're being rushed into from what happened
So once continues, it's still Monday night?
Couple of small things on the plan. So, addresses for the owner and applicant, so showing on the plan as is, A&amp;M LLC is listed at Grove Street in Orwell?
That's an old address.
Yeah, it's Beach Avenue Hall?
The current address is Hall, yes.
Okay. And then Elevated Roots showing as twenty-five Brantree Hill Park, but on the Secretary of State site, it's listed as fourteen, twenty-three Bedford. So if you look at, if you look at Elevated Roots LLC, the office is fourteen twenty-three Bedford.
Okay.
Having the three there might be just incorrect, because they're, I think that's their, like, kind of main operations.
Okay.
But I'll look into that for you.
We will check those addresses, thank you. I think those came from the...
I know that we had to re, I resubmitted or did resubmit the...
Yep, the application, yep.
With the, the property owner's address, but I'm not, I'll look into the Elevated Roots address.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah.
And on page C six here, grading and drainage plan for phase two. Erosion control measures shall be inspected regularly and inadequate supply material shall be kept on site for periodic repairs. Who would be doing that inspection, or who would be expected to do that inspection?
Well, it's a great question, we're not subject to an nipity's permit because the area of disturbance is far less than one acre, so it would be incumbent upon the contractor to make sure that, you know, any sediment-laden runoff stays on the site. I don't know if the town normally hires somebody to just keep an eye on projects, but...
We, we talked about that, how do we, how do we get money to have this, these things maintained?
And it's typical case where you exceed an acre, we'd be subject to the federal construction general permit, and there'd be a whole host of items to check off on a regular basis, that just doesn't apply here.
So in this case, would be the contractor would be...
Yes.
On the hook for those inspections, okay. And then any sediment that is tracked onto the public way shall be promptly removed via hand or machine sweeping, that probably should read at the end of each workday?
Yes, was that a spelling error on there?
That's Route 18?
Yes, yeah, I mean, that's typical language that I include for every project, just because, you know...
The notion of somebody out there by hand trying to clean anything on Route 18, or that, that's a little scary.
Yeah, it is, it is, but we, this, at the same time, first of all, the contractor should take all the necessary steps with an anti-tracking pad to make sure it doesn't get tracked onto in the first place, but if it does, it has to be removed because of the wind up in the drainage system. So I put those notes on there, you're, you're spot on. I wouldn't want to be out there with a push broom on Route 18 with cars going sixty-five miles an hour.
Right, right.
So, it's, again, it's, it's sort of generic boilerplate language.
If that does begin to constitute a problem and it's something that has to be done on a regular basis, then you may want to be thinking about a detail of some kind?
Yep.
Just because that, that, that traffic is fine.
I think that fact alone is going to make the contractor be much more diligent to scrub tires before they leave the site. And again, we're not talking about a, a major...
Right.
Earthwork operation here, it's just going to be during when they take up pavement, milling overlay, there'll be a small window of time, so if police details are needed, then, then...
Well, that's, when they go for the permit, that's when they'll find out all that, if they have to have a duty there, that's a whole nother group taking care of that.
Otherwise, we're not doing any work in the right of way, no utility connections, no pavement, saw cutting, anything of that nature, so...
It's nice that you have an existing building that really doesn't need to be improved.
Yeah, the footprint can be used, by the way, we didn't mention it, but the facade of the building will be upgraded, and I'm sure you're not familiar with the other two facilities, but they do a very nice job.
Oh, they're very, very nice.
So with the landscaping and the new facade, it'll be a much nicer project aesthetically.
How old is that building?
I don't know.
Can we get copies of the elevations? I'm not sure they've been fully developed.
Not for this particular location, but when we do, yeah.
Okay.
It's a very generic facade right now. Usually canopies are added and some under-canopy lighting, which we indicate on the lighting plan. There'll be less doorways along the front, that ramp, that concrete ramp that's there, that'll be gone.
Are you familiar with the other two locations, or...
No, I just know that they exist.
Okay, because I can assume that it would end up being...
We could immediately give you pictures of the existing, that's a great idea, just, just to give you the flavor of, you know, what...
It's lovely, I drove by Halifax, it's really nice.
Elevations are a part of our site plan requirements, so...
I drive by that Bud's in Marshfield every time I go to physical therapy, it looks like an abandoned auto building, it looks, it's...
That one's pretty nondescript.
Yeah, it's pretty much nothing, yeah.
So the requirements are just so, from the state, are just so strict about what you can have.
What you can have on the outside.
Yeah, they pretty much want it to look abandoned, just so no one else knows what's in there.
I'll make the motion continue if it's...
All right.
I'll second the motion.
What time, motion made and seconded?
Yeah.
All those in fair?
Aye.
Aye.
What time?
What time do you want to have it?
I don't care, six o'clock is here. Six o'clock, when are you going?
Six o'clock. Can do it at five o'clock? Can do it at four o'clock?
A little bit early would be better for me, but whatever.
Go ahead, what do you want? Honestly, isn't too early. Split the difference and go five o'clock?
Okay.
Yeah, if we can do five, I can move to my granddaughter's softball.
Is everybody good at five? No one wants?
I might have physical therapy, so I might not be there for that, I might be late. Well, you came here at six, and so I could show up at eight, you'll be here and...
I didn't as long since cold.
I was going to say, I ain't hanging around till eight.
All right, so five.
Awesome, thank you so much for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Did you guys go to the exiled? I haven't had time to get these.
Huh?
It's still there?
It's still there? Everybody will be with you guys tonight.
What was that screen?
It was Azu's phone.
Really?
I was trying to shut it off.
That's where that came from.
What, is that your wife?
Nope.
Is it screaming?
Did you record her one night when you walked in the door?[1740.62]
Oh, I'm telling you, I have to make sure.
She's like, oh, you're home.
I'm here.
Thank you very much. Thanks for, thanks for waiting.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is informal discussion, R E Rose Place modifications.
Good evening, and thank you for indulging me and, uh, Mr. Morris and, and Sergeant.
Can I have one of those more funs for the record? They're gonna take them all.
So I will appreciate, I'll argue with this one here too, so I can tell you something.
Let's see, there is. Yeah, this is the one showing the old.
It's a small piece that shows the rest of this one here.
So this one, that's our, um, here's this accessory here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's the, the, the.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much. Oh, here's one now. One back at you, ma. Oh, no.
No, that's two.
Two different, okay.
Yes.
It's always pretty close.
So, well, good evening, and, uh, thank you for indulging us. Uh, this project, it's almost like it were a project from another candidate. Uh, if you may recall, back in two thousand nine, the board had approved the, uh, the first sheet that I handed you with the orange color, uh, in secondary access, uh, from Doris. And so that's what was approved with the, um, mine lot layout. And then I, as you may recall, at the time, Wilbur Street, that, that little piece of Wilbur Street in front of the hatches properly, uh, was not, even though it's laid out, was not part of the road. And, uh, we went through the courts, and three years later, the courts approved the sale of that to Mrs. Glazer, the lead Mrs. Glazer. And, uh, this is how long it's gone. And so we brought that into part of the project. In the meantime, the order of conditions that the, uh, that the Constitutional Commission gave for crossing the wetlands, um, to deal with the secondary means of access, to deal with the dead-end issue of, uh, according to the Plan of Boards Rules and Regulations. We went back, the order expired. Uh, we didn't catch, you know, when Governor Duval Patrick and the legislature at the time had given that, um, uh, permit extension. So that extended that four years, the order of conditions. But then when the fourth year ran out, uh, we didn't, not remember that, hey, you gotta go back and file for an extension. But once that order expired, the Constitutional Commission couldn't extend it, because the regulations wouldn't allow that. So we filed for a new notice of intent with the same project, redid the wetlands, redid the, uh, drainage, and the Constitution approved it. But then D E P on its own initiative appealed it. And said it wouldn't allow the, uh, that the fillings excessive, and that we had not demonstrated that there is no other option available to overcome, uh, the presumption for secondary means of access. That the benefit of, uh, getting the second means of access, uh, the wetlands, uh, amount of wetland alteration does not justify it. And so for over a year and a half, since Constitution approved it, uh, the E P said no, and they required us to go to M I P A. And then M I P A themselves, which is the acronym for Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, unit of the, what used to be Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, it's now Executive Office of, uh, Energy and the Environment. Uh, so they changed the name, uh, with our governor, um, our just retired governor of, uh, Baker. And so the, the M I P A unit said, uh, no, they basically restated what D E P stated, that, uh, they would not ever go along with that. So it becomes one of those situations where we are caught between a rock and a hard place. And obviously, uh, after so much money spent on engineering, uh, and we are back to basically square one. And so what we've done, and the second sheet that I laid out, is what we are hoping, yes, this one. Uh, it's, this is super, that's the one you have here. So that's the second one, uh, so we thought of, uh, said, okay, uh, what can we do to demonstrate that that is possible, you know, what we can do? In the meantime, we have water and sewer available, but we've already been told that come this December, if we do not exercise those, they will give it to somebody else who's ready. Uh, and so, uh, that's why we're here. And so instead of hat on my head, I have hat in hand, you see? Now I'm a pan handler.
How'd we end up with ten instead of nine?
Uh, it's, it's really the same. It's, it's that, that the, the tenth lot didn't have frontage. Uh, but it might, it might be, um, uh, they already told us that they're not gonna, they only give the water to nine, so we're gonna have to sink in a well for that, not, not, not one.
So these lots were reduced in size, right?
How did you get the tenth lot?
Uh, if you, uh, uh, if you look at the bend here, I didn't have this.
Yeah, that's ten.
Yeah, so we didn't have this right here. This would just give.
Kind of looking back at the old plans.
So now I'm trying to get a frontage off of that. And, and, so. So, uh, the. We have also for fire protection, we have, uh, three, uh, hydrants proposed, so that we have the, uh, fire protection. But we also, uh, if you look at the correct, uh, uh, building code, Massachusetts Building Code, uh, you can also, for, even though it's residential, you can, uh, incorporate, uh, a sprinkler system, uh, for, for some of the houses. So a media sprinkler system.
Out of the, just a regular, just the regular fresh water coming in, you mean, or not?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, um, so what we have here, the road length is pretty much the same, but obviously, that second one required because, uh, as a matter of fact, what it also does, incidentally, is that that easement, that's an existing sewer easement, that we're actually saying, okay, instead of being wooded and treed, uh, right now, that will require regular maintenance. It has to, it has to be maintained, because it's a trunk line that goes through there. We said, okay, we can put some manholes, make that more accessible. And, uh, and, but that turn that I have, obviously, does not meet your radius requirement, um, uh, to negotiate that, but it's, I've, I've got a similar situation that we did in Bridgewater. Obviously, it can turn, and if the board wants to limit the use of that to only emergency, which is basically what we did, uh, with the old layout. It was gonna be an emergency, it was gonna have some gate on it, and with the fire department having the, uh, the keys to that, uh, we can do that with this one here too. So it's just, uh, after all these years, trying to, uh, uh, get something that might work, that, uh, at least satisfy, if you will, to some degree, everybody. And, uh, the D E P said they were, that, that makes a lot more sense to them than the amount of wetlands. Because they're saying not only, uh, even though we did all the engineering, that shows that it works, and they said they didn't have any problem with the engineering with the other section. They just didn't like the amount of wetlands that's been altered, over forty, about forty thousand square feet.
They actually send you something in writing that they didn't want that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That we never got?
I didn't get it.
No, we can, I can give you the.
You were supposed to do that.
One hundred percent.
Four months ago.
Well, but I wanted to have a lay-in and an option.
Yeah, no, you were gonna do that.
I didn't have that option.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah.
Just another ping in my inbox, but.
It matters to me.
It does matter to you guys, I know.
Matters a lot to me, isn't it?
So the secondary access wouldn't be open for the most part?
No, no, it could be. I'm saying if the board decided that they don't want it open to, for general use, which is basically what, uh, we did with the, uh, what we had before.
You know how, uh.
But it has to be built?
Yes.
For infrastructure reasons.
One hundred percent.
You know how the end of Mount Laurel State has that gate on the island?
Yeah.
Be that type of arrangement, I think, is what he's talking about.
That's why we haven't built out a full road, just for, to be gated both sides.
Main entrance is Wilbur, secondary Mattson? Is that what, is that the secondary?
Yeah, that's the street there.
Uh, no, this is actually not built.
Paper street?
Yeah, this is paper street. So, so basically, we come in here and come around here.
And then if this became emergency, only the.
Yes.
Gave it here?
Yes, yes.
Am I saying that correctly? Part of these houses are gonna be in Whitman?
All these.
But, uh, this is, uh, no, if you know, yeah, this one here, yes.
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 Where's the town line? There it is. Oh, okay, there it is.
So does that mean?
You pay half, you pay half.
I'm just thinking.
Tax and boot house.
Yeah.
Thinking you build a permit, but it doesn't matter.
Do you have to go to Whitman for planning board approval?
Right, because. Not only that, they, uh, were modifying the blocks too, yeah. There aren't many issues with that. We've been there.
It's a good place for them. So. So I'm, I'm sorry, I am confused. What is the reason for the extra road?
Uh, so.
That wasn't on the original plan?
Uh, well, so on the original plan, this is what we had as a secondary.
I get that, yeah. So. Why do we need the extra?
Well, so we have, we are saying in lieu of crossing the wetlands, that, uh, that the board could consider this as our secondary means of access. To get to here, should this, uh, here be blocked?
I don't think a gate would be. That would end up turning that road into a private parking area for those houses.
Yeah.
Did you talk to the fire department about that? Did you talk to the fire department about that?
About the gate?
About this little extra road piece?
The radius that doesn't meet.
Yeah.
The, it doesn't?
That's what you're saying.
No, no, it can turn, but your minimum radius.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't, but it can turn.
You got a swing.
I mean, I put a template there. It's just that, uh, you have, you're on regulation, minimum satellite radius. It doesn't, but in terms of actually turning, you can't make the turn, because I put a template on that, you know.
Well, I'd like to see that letter that I thought we were gonna get the last time.
So, question. Different plan, essentially, different number of lots.
Yep.
Different from the plan that was approved. So what is it you're asking us to do tonight?
Oh, no, no, no. No, no, I recognize this will require a new filing. I, I mean, I did speak with a assistant town planner, and, uh, well, we recognize that, you know, substantial. It's, it is a substantial change.
Sure.
But we didn't wanna, you know, uh, I mean, I wanna get paid, I wanna, I wanna be hired to keep producing plans. But at some point, that has to be a workable plan that is potentially approvable. You can not vote to approve it, but at, at the same time, if we get a sense that if in fact, that we produce all the relevant documents, that this is something that the board could consider, uh, in lieu of, uh, wetlands alteration.
I'm a person of state, was it? I, I've had about a dozen projects in my life where the last few years, and I, after the first year, you just cringe at opening up the file again.
Oh, yeah.
So that was all land, land court.
Yeah, land court, yeah.
I don't know how the board feels, but this corner lot here, like a slot five.
Sitting on the hill?
Yeah, sitting on the hill, basically. You're sitting on a six-foot hill. Um, and, and the footprint of it is in the downslope. My feeling is, you know, I know everything is otherwise fifty by thirty-five, but I think you need to adjust it for your actual site. And so that means you have one property that maybe isn't fifty by thirty-five, or if you could re-coordinate in some other direction. But I, I don't like the idea of having a footprint sit in the middle of your, your hillside.
Sure.
I, um, and I, I've said this before in other projects, I don't like having those six-to-seven foot drops right off the back door. I just, I don't like it. I think it's unfair to the, but I think people can buy whatever they want.
To walk out basement.
Yeah. I, I can't believe what people will spend money on, and just call that a house and ask me a half a million to give it there. I have no idea what people buy stuff for.
So, just, I guess, just figure out, I would just reconfigure that lot, please.
I mean, I think the broader question here, if what's being sought is, um, obviously, we can't grant approval.
Yes.
But a general consensus that we're okay with this, then, um, there, there are the changes relative to the additional lots, as you mentioned, uh, where the houses are. But this represents the biggest modification.
Yeah, inventive engineering, I've had to come up with that too. I mean, he's done a lot of hand, and, you know, looked at every inch of this thing.
The other broader picture is, this is way off the main drag, down Wilbur Street. Have you ever been down Wilbur Street?
Yeah, yeah.
That's, hence why it was approved, that other roadway, second access. It was, it was gonna be an emergency access, but still, it's way, way, way down in the woods.
Yeah, so it's like, I don't know if you need a secondary access just for this hundred and fifty feet here.
I could be persuaded if I saw that letter.
Another seven hundred feet this way, or five hundred feet this way.
I could, I could be persuaded, but I haven't seen that letter, I'm saying.
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys have ever driven down Wilbur Street, but it's.
It's, yeah, it's a little tiny.
Yeah.
Thing, yeah.
You know, we're making it, uh, at least in this section that we're building, making it wider than it is, uh, are the approach.
But not the road, right?
Hmm?
You're not making the road wider, just the.
Oh, no, no, just the, the section that we're working on, yes, yes.
I think other than some of the adjustments he, he was, uh, that Rick, Rick was talking about.
Yes.
Should be looked at, just to fine tune it.
Oh, one hundred percent.
But believe it, I, you know, we've seen stuff that, you know, I could tell that no one ever looked at, really, we just kinda put it on the plan.
Well, that, that's, that's, that's me, so that's on your first reading, so you know, you know.
Well, we would feel bad for a lot, like, you're talking about building on the hills.
Yeah.
The, the builder never tells the owner that you gotta do this, and then they get left with that.
That's true.
They don't know what to do with it.
So, um, water actually flows from Wilbur Street towards Whitman? Am I reading this correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure we wouldn't have the same problem that we had at Dorsey, which is that everything from the development was flowing into the existing neighborhood.
No, no, no.
This is actually the opposite, the just neighborhood flows into.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Oh, I see a proposed landscape island. I don't think you're gonna find anybody liking that. Yeah.
Okay.
But that's just, maybe it's one of, is it, will you say that, Mr. German? Yeah, okay. I've just listened to it for enough years.
Get rid of that, okay.
Yeah.
I hate that we have to be dictated by that need, because it looks terrible, it's just a big series of.
Ah, I know, very, very, I know.
How hard is it to do the slanted granite slats? I've seen that in some developments, where it's, you know, property to. I've seen that in some developments where it's, you know, probably ten inches.
Yeah, I got that on my studio, I love that, actually. It's good for plowing and keeps the car off.
But then if the, if the engine hits the curb, it just kind of rides up on it a little bit, doesn't actually.
Yeah, rides up and over.
And you still have it, silent.
Uh, yeah, honestly, I don't, it's just that I don't have a prob, I mean, I don't know how we think anymore, I've been, I've been using Mr. Smith's, I've integrate what people are, interest, what interests them, and one of his was this never-ending story about driving to plow. And how difficult it is to drive in a circle, I'm not quite sure what they, what the problems, but I used to be driving to plow, and back then, they were probably using steam plows. I know.
I'll let him know he's coming by tomorrow.
So what happens is when you're plowing on a circle with an island, now you're hitting curb on both sides, as opposed to riding one side. If you look at your standard road.
Yeah.
When you're coming, you're not plowing the whole width of the road, you only plow on the one side, so the side in the middle has no restriction. So that allows you to maneuver a little bit easier. Whereas if you're going around an island, you're hitting the curb there here, and you're hitting the curb here.
Then all the snow gets pushed to one side.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Uh, you may wanna just talk about some snow removal areas when you're down the road, and just looking at that circle only.
Yeah.
But it's probably okay, but I, I don't know about pushing, uh, dirty snow up against that, that hill, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out, this is just okay. All right. I don't, I, I, like I say, I wanna see the letter, but.
Well, you know, and one other thing I have to try and clarify here, you're saying you're running out of water into a sewer permitting by?
Oh, yeah, so, so the water sewer, we've got approval for the nine lots. But they give you a timeframe.
Sure.
To exercise that.
And that's running out by the end of the year?
December of this year.
It's more modern, so, yeah.
Yeah.
So now what you're talking about, the realization that this constitutes a new submission?
That's correct.
You gotta come in with a new plan.
Yes.
Gotta go over engineering review.
That's fine, yeah.
Um, and then the board has to take whatever time it has to take to deliberate upon the new plan.
Yes, yes, one hundred percent.
Don't know if you have to go to Whitman?
Oh, we will go, uh, build to them, they have no problem with what we're doing.
All right. It's July.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why we're here, I mean, we're ready to pounce and get plants, to get another, think of, uh, you just gotta have a whole sticking point, you know, it's, so, um.
If we were to approve two or three months out? And I don't, I don't know what that timeline would look like.
Right.
But it wouldn't be next month?
Oh, definitely not, definitely not, wouldn't be, wouldn't be September either.
So now you've got a new plan.
Yeah.
There may be iterations, as there oftentimes are.
Well, fully reviewed.
The engineering comes in and says, like, I don't like that, I don't like that, change that, and then you gotta make revisions, come back again.
Mm-hmm.
So, what happens if, um, you get approval in, of the new plan in October?
Yeah.
And now you've got sixty days left before you're.
So, so I think, I think, because right now, they know we can't, we're not building.
Right.
But if that, I'm hoping that if we get it written down by December, and they know we're ready to go to work, that hopefully, that's, you know, I cannot predict as, as to a new.
That they would grant some kind of extension?
Yeah, I cannot predict that, I would, it would be foolish for me to stand here and say, oh, well said, I can't do that, you know? They have to react to the reality of what we're dealing with, and see how they react to it, you know?
Yeah, I could add on to what you're bringing up, the approval from Whit, from Whitman will be something that when we can, we're not, we can't say vote on a piece of property in another town. So you're gonna need some, uh, i- i- information to give us that they have made, predicated on their approval, our approval.
Yeah.
Basically, you're gonna need to have those, that information.
Protocol is here, there's a vice versa.
Just to have it when it comes in, say, well, they've already looked at it, and, you know.
Mm-hmm.
But, or if it has to, or if it's predicated, if you approve this, but if Whitman, but if Whitman approves it, will you bring it to them?
So, so, last go around, when we did the one that you already approved.
Yeah.
They waited for your approval, because they said all the work is done and happened, and so, since and thus, approving it, we can't do anything.
Okay, but I guess it's gonna be one of those ones where we approve it.
Almost like a concurrent, it's stipulation.
Stipulation, yeah, okay, that's it.
Probably it's all in Alex.
Right.
The water's all in Whitman.
Yeah, well, that's.
Yeah. It's a, it's a hill.
So, the, the, this, again, we can't sit here tonight, and all we're looking at is a, is a lot plan.
Yeah.
A revised lot.
Oh, yeah, no, no, yes, yes.
So we're very limited in what we can.
Right, I'm, I'm.
What we can do with this.
You can't approve it, because it's not a formal, you don't have any input from your, it's basically an idea of, use this concept. If all the items that could be required, if they are addressed, well, this is something that we would be willing to entertain. Obviously, even when you say that, you're gonna entertain it. Down the road, there may be something that come up that says, no, we're not gonna approve this. We, 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 that's, that's why, that's why it's taking a risk. But at the end of the day, it's just more of, okay, if all, all things being equal, if we have done all we could do, and you have your independent engineers look at it, so, okay, it passes muster, and, but quite frankly, I was looking at the new MS four requirements through the conservation commission, what they approved before, what they are requiring now is a lot more substantive.
Right.
So, so we recognize that, that's why I wanna at least share, uh, this concept. It's like, well, when people are designing new automobiles, they go to the stakeholders and say, okay, this is our constant variable. Then I start designing the engine, designing the, uh, exhaust system and everything else that go with it. They just said, this is a concept, if everything goes well, is it something that we give you all the input from DEP, give you all the engineering, your engineers approve it, say that everything is good, is it some, is it a concept that could be entertained by the board, that's really what I'm looking at, I'm asking.
Personally, if, if this was a different use, that'd be a different story, but limited to residential, uh, I don't have a problem with that, basically, that, this plan. Uh, but, in, like you said, in the general scheme of things, um, and I have no sense of bringing up any other scenario, but that residential, I have, um, this is a tough site, I've been, I've dealt with really, 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 really tight sites before, so, I can appreciate you made it work. There's a few small areas, but you're gonna look a little closer at, but, um, personally, I'm, I'm, I'm on board with it. Whether I say yes at the end of it.
Right, right, I understand that.
This is high risk. I mean, given the fact, what, what you're, sounds like what you're banking on, is that if you can get this to a certain point, then you're in a position to go ask for extensions.
That's correct.
On water and source.
That's correct, that's correct. They wouldn't give us an extension, right, as, as it is, because they know.
And there is, of course, no guarantee, that they're gonna say, sure, we'll do that.
Yeah, but at the end of the day, there's an engineer, not a landlord.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anything else on the board?
How do we? This isn't even a vote, is it?
No, no.
It's just a discussion.
Casual.
Some boards don't allow that, so I'm glad we do, because it's killer when they come up before the board and get crushed. Yeah, so we, we.
Did you read the original plan?
Yes, I did.
It's been a while.
That's why, that's why I said I cut my hair low, because all the gray has been, I call it low, you know? I, you know, when I came here last time, I was looking like, uh, Don King, and I would say, jeez, that might cost me approval.
Huh, I remember that.
Oh, no, it was, it was big, yeah.
When can you get me that letter?
I can do that tomorrow, with this, email you this altogether.
Yep, you email, yep, you send all of it to me, and I'll get it out to them.
Yes, please. Yep.
So when are you gonna work on the piece of metal's condo plan?
I don't even know who bought it yet.
Nobody has it, hasn't been auctioned yet.
Well, she, so, the, uh, WBC reported it wrong then, because they, they said it's been sold at an auction, and the, uh, the Aston shop, shop will stop selling in August.
What I saw today, just today, was it was being auctioned in August.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what, that's what Steve, that's what Steve Egan told me when I was talking to him, he said, no, it's supposed to be, so the news.
Is it, is it big enough for farming? Is it, it's not that big, I mean, it looks big to my house, but.
It's huge.
Well, that's, that's, that's a triangular estate, they've got over a hundred acres, I mean, half of his wetlands.
Obviously, Steve's interested. So is another people.
So is another people.
So is another people.
Yeah.
The acres across the street are buildable, the ones behind the.
You know, the air, the reason it's going up, this much I know, the people that were support, the young people that are here in it, don't want anything to do with it.
Typical, right?
Typical.
Yeah.
They just want, they're like, hey, man, right?
Yeah, been going there for, been going there for thirty years, I understand.
I'd like if it was open in January. I can go out in a snowstorm, it's like.
I know, till ten AM, they will open, you know?
Okay.
All right.
Great, thank you.
I kind of get it first, one, one sense.
What took you so long? Where you at? Uh, what was it, three months ago you were here?
Uh, yes, no, uh, we were, we are doing all kinds of different layouts, yeah.
It's, it's. I honestly don't like that, how far it is, um, I may be on board with less impact on the wetlands. My concern is how far down into the middle of the woods this places, without another connection out.
Yeah.
Um, that letter hinges on my decision, not that I haven't seen that, I thought you were gonna give us three months ago. And I know things have changed.
Yeah.
As, you know, the, the requirements have changed since then.
Mm-hmm.
I get it.
A lot of it is gonna come down to whether, how much of it is conforming use. You know, versus what kind of, of, uh, variances, for lack of a better word, you might be asking.
He's gonna be looking for the distance off, without the second exit. At least, right?
It'll be six hundred feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, well, before we even get to here, we'll review about six hundred feet.
Right, that's, that's the catch.
That's the big.
And as he was standing on that, DEP was saying, no, 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 and I, I haven't seen that letter yet, is why I'm asking.
Well, we get both the DEP and the NEPA one, the NEPA one.
All right.
Okay. Thank you for indulging us, appreciate your time.
Yeah. I'll add one more comment, if that's where we're going, I, I think that's a, was an idea with the extra roadway.
Yeah.
To try to mitigate some of that.
Right.
Not that I wanna see extra pavement, but.
The secondary road, you're talking about?
Right, kinda, kinda mitigates the, if something happens halfway up, you know?
Right.
Not a second access.
I wish you could say that doesn't happen, it never happened in my neighborhood.
Yeah, a dog would start.
Well, no, just all of a sudden, all of a sudden, happens all the time, it's like, a big tree falls across, oh my god, I can't.
Right.
They gotta come pouring through the back neighborhood. Uh, yeah, I know, and it never happened before. I'm glad William was on the board. All right.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Appreciate your constructive input. This makes us watch up, and that's all. No word, no word says iron shapings iron, so, I appreciate your input. Thank you very much.
They want, they want, all of a sudden, there's an extra house line?
Yeah, the extra house got thrown in there, um, I kind of figured that might disappear too. The, uh, the probably said, squeeze it in, if we can't get it, you know? It's not, it's not a make or break.
Yeah, you want to stop for minutes? And just so you know, I did email.
Telelogist.
That plan that I sent to you guys, I sent it to the fire department today. And they said the last time they were here, that the fire department was open like that. The fire department, they said, send something, and we didn't get anything, so I sent it to them today. Only because if they, they get some light started, then everybody should know that.
They were gonna send that letter two, three months ago, that we knew it got, but I.
Yeah, I think, I was just saying, I sent it to, um, the fire department today, if they get their feedback.
All right, next up, minutes, May, March, April, February, January, everybody get a chance to read them?
Make a motion to, that's a blanket?
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No formase?
No formase.
Any correspondence?
No correspondence.
CBA agenda, anybody see anything on that?
Did I send one to you guys? I don't think I did, right, I, you know what, I'm going, huh, I am not sure that I got one, uh.
And the checks we were all gonna get.
Bill Mullen has left the building, so, um.
He's no longer with the building department?
He left every, he may stay with zoning, I'm not sure, there's a rumor going around, but he's, yeah, he took a job. But I'm not sure he's gonna stay with zoning, he was funded firm.
I was gonna say, why would you?
I know he's going to their July meeting, but other than that.
So, same field, are we not?
Sealer points and measures for Norfolk County.
Interesting.
Yeah, he was doing that for us, but.
I thought he was very.
That's a fun non-job. It's like, that's like being a fence guy. You know, it's kind of like.
A fence hero?
Yeah.
Everybody get a chance to look at the OCP, OCP modeling of options, maybe K?
Yes.
Yep.
Bruce, I have, I have critiques as to the, for the presentation, half serious, half joking, but then mostly serious, actually. What is this map?
That's, of course.
I mean, these, these maps are, are, a lot of work, I appreciate what they do, these maps are useless in some ways, because there's no streets on here, there's no property lines, I don't know what's what, I don't know what I'm looking at.
Well, the little dot, and, you know what, actually, I think.
I can't pick out.
I mean, I hate to tell you this, I think this came out of the MBTA toolkit.
Okay.
If you look in the middle, that little white train is the train station.
Okay.
Right, and then on the bottom, they have half-mile radius.
Is that what that is?
Yeah.
There it is.
Yeah, I, I need a little bit better.
Is that the scale?
All right, so basically what they're saying is, if we just keep it our existing Todd district.
And tweak a couple of things, yeah.
Tweak a couple of things, we more than cover our nut.
Correct.
Okay.
The golden, the golden total there is one thousand twenty-two units, have the capacity to be created.
However, the current Todd district doesn't include the point forty B?
No, or the other one at Zero Summer Street, and it doesn't matter, because it's area, they're not counting buildings.
No, I know, but I mean, I'm just saying, so, does it count with the woodlands?
Nothing gets counted, they're not, I, I know what you're talking about, they're not counting any of that stuff. So Glenn's a hundred and forty-four units, and the Zero Summer Street, a hundred and ninety-nine units, would go towards that one zero two two number, yes, I think that's what you're.
You basically, if we, my thought was to pull it in elsewhere, push it out to those projects, and then it's, it's.
So I think they're included in that half-mile, I will look at these better, um, to see, to make sure that that is covered.
Like, if we wanted to pull it off of, I think Plymouth Street a little bit, or up center or something?
So, did you read the May thirty-first one? I went back to OCPC and asked them to model forty percent around the train station, sixty percent down.
Yeah, option three, if you will.
Yeah, option three, I, we talked about option three right up the top when she came in, and then I didn't get it. Um, she was leaving, so I.
Yeah.
And she did a great job for the amount of time. And she did a great job for the amount of time she had with six communities doing it.
I mean, I'd, I'd be floored if they allow us to consider South Weymouth part of our zone.
We cannot use their train station.
Yeah.
That's out of the range, but we can put sixty percent of our district someplace else. They do provide that flexibility within the zoning.
Okay.
So we can put forty percent, or roughly four hundred units, create the capacity for that around the train station.
Yeah.
And then, within that half mile. And then we can put sixty percent down on the Abington property.
Gotcha.
At the base.
Okay.
Um, that's, one of the things I wanted to talk to you guys tonight about is how do you guys want to go about choosing an option to move forward? Um, do you want to see if I can have a survey created? Um, for the public to maybe weigh in on? Do you guys want to just pick?
I mean, if I can tell you my other preference, I very well could be in the minority on this, is that I would, I think it would be smarter if we use the zone in Abington Center as well. Because that place is a ghost town, and it's just underutilized property. So, um, I don't know if it would make sense to, you know, take, I don't know if the acreage is from basically St. Patrick's Square down to, you know, brothers or something, and just those, both sides of those street, and just say, this is part of the zone. And that's, that's at least.
But, but the problem with that is, and you're right, but the problem with that is, think of, it, because in my head, this is what I see happening. A single family comes down and five units go up, a single family comes down, seven units go up. In my head, that's what I see happening to an already overburdened area. Right, the infrastructure doesn't support what's going on down there now.
In Abington Center?
Not in Abington Center, but by the train station.
Yeah.
A half mile, it's, it's got to be within a half mile of the train station. We can't just ignore that piece of it.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, is do.
But you're, so, but now, but, so you're taking all of that along with it.
Nope, I'm saying, take forty percent in the train, in our Todd district, and then rest of it up in Abington Center. So you're skipping over a lot of that.
So you're putting sixty percent up in Abington Center.
Possibly, or fifty, however the, the numbers.
It would have, it has to equal a hundred, we have to, we have to have the capacity to produce.
Maybe it's sixty, forty the other way.
I, I think that's, my own personal opinion, I think it's a lot for that area, and for that infrastructure.
Well, I think it's.
I mean, you're already hearing the people about Summer Street now. I think that would be a really tough sell. I get where you're going with that. Um, I mean, maybe there's some way we can mimic the zoning and change it from a central business district, and maybe encourage multiple units by right up to a certain amount, I mean, that can always be done.
Because whatever we're doing in Abington Center is not working.
Exactly. So I mean, maybe that would help.
It's pavement and parking lots.
Right, I mean, part of that is the bank.
It was like that before.
Yeah.
I'm confused, because, I know there's two centers, there's the business one on one thirty-nine, and then there's the one that old, old timers consider.
Yeah, that's the old timers one, where they took down, you know, the blocks of buildings to put the parking lot for Santander Bank, and.
Oh, yeah, 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 that one.
You know, they replaced, uh.
That's why we changed the zoning to building right onto the road.
They replaced the big brick building that burned down in the early sixties with a one-story liquor store. You know, all that stuff.
So that's probably the problem there, is the bank owns the big chunk of that.
The bank can sell it off, they can make money, they thought they could make more money.
Oh, yeah, they got too much land.
As much as people remember, maybe lose, and what it was used for, it's a small, little one-story building. You know, that and the market next door and everything, I mean, just it's underutilized space. Especially when we have the commercial development department and staff.
So, first question is, how would you like to determine what zoning district to move forward? Do you guys want to read through everything and then make that determination at your next meeting? Do you want to see if I can get a survey pushed out to see what the townspeople think?
What do you, when you say, do everything, what do you mean by that?
No, no, just look at everything again, and make a determination on which, which option you would find the most palatable.
Are you going to throw it out there for the, for the town people?
I would work with Samantha Linnahan, who's our media consultant, and do like a Survey Monkey survey. Like, they drafted one for the, um, um, DPW um, fire station, there's been a survey out there about that.
Something, survey of the, the, the people that are within that district are the ones we want, the business owners, and to see what they're looking for. Because they don't want to do anything to keep the business coming. Most of them are too small to afford anything.
So that's, I mean, we're talking a half mile from the train station is one of those options. The other one is that to the west. And then the other one is forty percent down at the train station and sixty percent over the base.
Can we, can we go back to Old Colony Planning and ask and put some labels on the maps? Because just, I have no idea what I'm looking at.
I can ask them.
Just in terms of.
I don't know that there's anybody there that can do it, but who ask?
Understand what the boundaries are. So if, if we were to, regardless of what the options were, compared to what the existing Todd district is versus if we split it up, I just, like I said, these maps are just, I have no idea what I'm looking at. And I know I've only been in town fifteen years, but, I mean, I'd like to think, but figure out what center ab is on a map, and I can't.
Next, you're going to want to address this on the businesses.
Yeah.
I'm sure Andrew Vidal could redo this.
Um, I can ask him, but he wasn't part of this process initially, it was all, um, Donnie.
Who's no longer there.
Who's no longer there.
Because we're going to have to explain the boundaries to.
Right, well, the boundaries will have to be included in any zone we drive.
My general sense is that, if we're talking about what they refer to as District One, transit oriented, right?
Yeah.
And District Two, R thirty. Then obviously we're talking about.
Right, but we can't have an R thirty, because that's, that doesn't be the quality.
Well, that's what, that's the zoning she used.
Yeah.
Um, so we would have to tweak the R thirty district to include, um, multi-unit developments by use.
Special permit?
No.
No.
No, straight up. We can't, we can't restrict it with a special permit.
So, all right, maybe I'll refuse that.
We can't.
These are our existing Todd district. Fifty acres.
So... Um, District One, which is the Todd, the total district, district acreage is sixty-seven point five three.
Yeah.
Um, the density denominator is forty-eight point nine six, and the final unit capacity would be one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five.
Right, so we've actually shrunk the existing Todd district and still meet the standards.
Yes, well, I think that's the half mile around.
Right.
And I'm not sure we can shrink it under, I, I'm not sure we can shrink it under half mile.
It can be, it can be less than half mile on one side and more than a half mile on the other side, as long as it's equal to fifty acres, what I understand. I mean, a fif, a half mile radius around a train station is, you know, a few thousand acres.
Doesn't have to be the whole, yeah.
Yeah, so, this is just a piece of it. But I, I guess we could kind of pick and choose exactly what parcels fall into this district if we have a little bit different map.
Up to a certain point.
Yeah, because there might be some parcels where like, you know what, this doesn't make sense anymore, but it'd be better if we put it this way, and fudged it, and.
But they would all have to be contiguous.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, a-again, whether it's the transit oriented district or the rezoned R thirty, we're talking about existing neighborhoods.
Yeah, but, you know, for instance, I think Progress Street and behind Franny's is not in the Todd district currently. But would it make sense to be in this district instead? And so that means you could take it from elsewhere and push it that way. I'm hypothetically, I'm not married to any idea, but the, the point is that we've already done a lot of the work, we already have existing rules, it doesn't require much from us. We can just, we're just talking little tweaks versus a lot of communities, which is just, they got to make something out of whole cloth.
And we are having somebody wearing it.
Yeah.
And we have somebody doing the inclusion of the zoning, I got a grant for that, so that's going to be included.
Which would be fantastic.
So generally, the reaction of existing neighborhoods to multifamily development. Especially multifamily development by right.
Yeah.
Which limits our ability or anybody else's ability to dictate exactly how it's going to be done.
Right.
Typically, we're going to see a lot of opposition to that.
But what's, what's currently allowed now, isn't that different than what would be allowed under that? So I mean, if we make no changes, they're still, by right, they can come in with a multi-use development.
No, they can't.
By right, they can't.
They can come in with a mixed use.
That's why I meant it's mixed use at all.
Yeah, and there's a restriction on the percentage of residential in comparison to the commercial floor space.
Right, so I mean, somebody can tear down a house on Center Ab, Center Street.
Yeah.
Center Ab. And builds multifamily by right.
As a part of the mixed use.
Part of the mixed use.
And they would have to have parking, so that, in my head, that, you know, what I'm thinking is, and maybe the same would hold true. Um, you know, they're smaller lots, and not necessarily, but a mixed use would require more parking because of that commercial piece of it. Where a residential doesn't require as much parking.
I just think this is, it's, it's easier to sell if we this, it would be as hard to sell as it will be in other towns, because it's already kind of there. Maybe people don't realize it, but it's kind of already there. We're, we're ninety percent there currently, without doing anything.
But it's not because of that commercial piece, right?
Yeah.
I mean, and I think everybody's already seen that with the two forty Bs.
Yeah.
Right, there was a lot of resistance to that.
It doesn't matter what happens with the forty Bs.
That's why they're forty Bs.
Yeah, I know, but I think, and it was the.
But these are better, because we actually tell someone who comes in under this, no, now you actually have to improve the roads and the sidewalks and traffic intersections.
We can't.
You can mitigate this. This specifically says that you're allowed to mitigate.
Portions of it.
Yeah.
Right?
You can't do any of that at forty B.
No, no, I know, I know. I know.
You can't tell them to build a new high school, but you can tell them to, you know.
Right.
Maybe build a sidewalk or fix an intersection.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, what do you guys want to do?
What do you want to do?
I need to know what you want to do, how you want to proceed with this.
I would like to see a detailed map of all the parcels.
Okay, but outside of that, do you want to do a survey? Or do you guys want to make your own decision?
Yes, I would like to do a survey.
I need a roadmap on, because by like, November, December, it's, we're all in on trying to educate people, we're going to have to have community meetings.
I would like to do a survey, do you think there's a main problem if we do a survey in July, August, versus September, October?
No, because it'll be out on social media, people don't take a vacation from social media. Except for me.
This is, um, the difficulty with the survey, I don't, I'm not arguing against it, but the difficulty with the survey is that there is, there's a lot of information here.
Yeah.
That people need to understand before they start checking yes or no.
Well, I think we would sort of do it conceptually. Right, this, that, we're required to have the capacity for this many units. We have modeled these three options, and I'll get fixed maps. And one is this, two is this, and three is this.
Yeah. Part of the underlying theme is that those number of units have to be allowed for.
Right.
We don't have an option.
We have type of capacity.
Saying those numbers.
We don't have an option.
Right, and I almost, but I don't want to lead with that either, right? Like, so if we don't adopt this, they're going to cut off our local aid. And at the end of the day, that's the true story, right, that's what's going to happen.
And that's what I'm saying, is that there's underlying themes here that people need to understand before they start responding to a survey. And again, I'm not arguing against a survey, I'm just saying that we want educated and informed opinions.
How about I have her draft something up and I send it to you guys?
Okay.
You can have an opportunity to look at it?
Yeah.
And get back to me with any thoughts you have.
You can end up getting a lot of NIMBY kind of responses.
Well, that's what's going to happen anyway.
That's not going to help us. That's not going to help us.
Um, well, I mean, and I, so I guess that's why we need to.
You're going to have to back to, we're going to make the decision.
Section three A is right.
It's like debates on town floor, and you get a whole bunch of uneducated people kind of come up with an answer at the last second, and without all that information, you just.
Survey, no, we're going to have to make the decision.
Well, then, do you want to kill a survey and just you guys make the decision?
I honestly don't think it's a waste of time.
I like the idea, but I, I haven't seen that.
A waste of your time.
Making a decision means, um, recommending one of the three options that's on the table?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, unless somebody can come up with somebody to get other options modeled.
I think the three options are fine.
Yeah, I do too, I think they came out okay, at the end of the day.
There should be some mechanism, so, so the, the, the process may then be, the board is going to arrive at some kind of consensus on which of these we would recommend.
Yeah.
And then we could proceed to the public hearing steps.
With it? With the recommended.
With a recommendation.
With the recommended zoning change.
And, and if the result of those public hearings is,
You're crazy.
Changes our mind, then.
Well, then you got to think about when you're going to, we're going to start holding those public hearings, because I can't, we can't have a change of mind in February, right? With a town meeting in April.
It, it is true, though, we get the best feedback at the meetings we're at, you know, we have those kind of meetings.
Do you want to give it a twirl in October, your October meeting? To have a conversation, a public conversation about the three options?
Yeah.
And try to get some feedback there?
Yeah, kind of walking through the three options in some degree of detail, kind of conceptually what it is about, what the different alternatives are. And then, at least, you can offer something back to the townspeople to say, see the, the.
Right, go look at that meeting.
Go look at that meeting.
Yeah.
If you wanted explanation of, uh, what the options are, what the board is faced with.
It would be transparent.
It would be helpful if we could see what, what the streets.
I'm going to reach out to him tomorrow.
Definitely helpful.
Right, I, I get where you're coming from, but I, honestly, I think that was the, the modeling mechanism of the state provided.
Yeah, which is fine, our original zoning map, when they redid it, that was hanging on the wall downstairs, didn't have any streets on it, and I was banging my head up against.
Right.
I didn't know what that was.
Where the districts were.
But I've played enough with this software to know that, because you have to go and touch, tell the color to sit, go in the background.
At least if you've got some focus on some of the major streets, it would be easier to, to tell.
Yeah.
Because that's the question we want to hear from people, is, is my property in this district?
You bet.
Need to be able to say, yes or no.
It is, and I know from the last time, a lot of people didn't know their property had changed. And I was like, geez, what's up with that?
And, and we are allowed under this to recommend or require ten percent affordable.
Not yet. We're going to include that in the zoning.
Yeah.
That's the inclusionary zoning piece, and we can do ten percent because we didn't do a feasibility study. In order to do, in order to do more than ten percent, we would need to have done a feasibility study. And I think time has sort of run out on that option.
Bruce, related question. Um, we got some great numbers from Old Colony Planning about the breakdown of Abington's housing stock between single-family, two-family, three-family, multifamily, et cetera, et cetera. And it was really eye-opening to find out what those numbers were. Do you know if they do those for every community, that sort of breakdown?
Yeah, if, if, they do it if the community is requested.
Okay.
But you figure that Rockland is an MACC community, Whitman is an OCPC. They have to see if they did a housing, those figures came from a housing production plan.
Okay.
And I don't know, you know, what, if they, OCPC's done a housing production plan for the town of Whitman or not.
Okay.
So where are you going with that?
I feel like Abington has done its share for larger developments compared to other towns. I think if you look around, I think the number of large, especially after these two forty Bs get built, that I feel like we've kind of, we've done our share. And, um, it might be time to tighten things up a little bit. Just to adjust to the new population coming in, because none of everything's fully built yet, either. Um, you know.
But we don't have any water.
Well, and that's the other part, is we don't have any water right now. But I mean, you know, when you read that over half of our housing stock is multifamily, okay, well, we've done our share. It's time for other towns now to do their share. Now, we've been much more progressive when it comes to, I think, large scale development. And I think it's time that we take, maybe take a consideration about taking a step back and saying that suggests to our new reality. And work on our infrastructure.
Absent 3A.
Absent 3A.
Because that is what it is.
Yeah.
And we don't have any control.
And I'm not saying moratorium, because we can't, that's a regal.
Right.
But we don't have to have open arms for 120 unit apartment complexes anymore.
Water stops that.
Yeah, they have, we'll fix that eventually. Okay, but the point is that I want to be able to see if I was wrong, and that, no, we haven't done our share, and other towns are far, much further ahead of us. You know, if you look and you saw that, you know, Whitman, Hanson, Halifax, Pembroke, were all much more diverse than, that's just my opinion.
They've taken that, whether they have sewer or not.
Yeah.
Because he's worried about it doesn't, right? So they still retain their little.
But if we look at the numbers, and it turns out that our housing stock breakdown is much more similar to Brantree, which is on NWRA, well, I mean, that's, we could feel better by saying, okay, we need to.
Well, I don't disagree with you at all.
Yeah.
Rick, you could go to the OCPC website and look up the reports that they've done.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do.
And you see if they did a housing production plan, like, they did this stuff.
I will do that.
Alright. I think we've discussed this.
There's only one thing new that, and I, I thought I'd have a report, but I lost all my photographs. Is the drainage for the new, who's it, 753, on Bedford Street, next to Shar Avenue, they became a dental place now.
Yep.
Uh, went out there during one of their big rainstorms, and they hadn't finished out there, and the water's just rushing off into the neighbor's property. It's washing the hill that, where we were all worried about the water collecting. It's rushing down like a river, I was standing in it, it's flowing over everything, building up in a big pile, and the neighbors' houses, right there.
Is it the neighbor on Bedford Street or the neighbor on Shar?
The neighbor on Bedford Street is getting water from two places, which is, because they didn't finish, they didn't put all the curbs in. They didn't finish doing all the asphalt curbing.
How long ago was that?
Uh, week or two, two weeks ago.
Because it, he hasn't called me, and that's unusual. Like, if he's having issues, he usually calls.
Yeah, they put down woodchips, and you could see the flow in the woodchips, but then I started actually doing that, and it was like an inch of water running over the surface. Mainly it's because of the, the curbs, if they had put the curbs in, the water wouldn't be jumping off the park and like down the hill. Everything else looked good, the drainage, out back, the water was picking up just perfectly, you know, the retention or the detention, no, retention line.
Good.
Any discussion of master plan goals tonight?
I would, I think we've got a lot going on right now.
I, I can tell you, we got a grant to design a trail out in back of the, going from the library to Broad Meadow, which is part of both the open space plan and the master plan goals. So cherry picking them one by one.
Well, and, and this is something I think I talked about a while ago, but I would like to come back to it at some point, is that, I don't know what year we're in of, of the year 10 anniversary where there has to be redone.
2019, we're in 2023, so we get six years.
Okay, so, you know, as we come up on the halfway mark, it would be really nice if we could take the master plan and, know how much progress we've made halfway through the 10-year period.
More the last time.
I don't.
Hmm? More the last time already.
Yeah, I just, I don't have a feel for it. I mean, there's some things, like the things that Liz is talking about, there's other things that, you know, are going on, that are progress. But I mean.
Well, we do have an open space and recreation committee, so that, and they're going to update their plan, so that's going to help that piece of the master plan.
Yeah, they're going pretty good.
We have an affordable housing trust now, which is going to help that piece of the master plan.
Yeah, precisely.
Right.
Precisely.
Right.
And so, and so how do we keep track of that?
It's in my head.
Because we're the keepers of the master plan, right?
It's in my head.
Um, that's.
Alright.
We've got a trail, which I'm very excited to hear we got the grant for. At what point do we want to start talking to neighbors?
You know, they had this conversation before, and the biggest thing was, was we were going to build a rape, rape trail.
Yeah, I know.
Um, so that was the only thing about putting a thing for the woods that no one's going to be.
But I mean, that's, that's also part of it, is to figure out, okay, this trail needs to have cameras, needs to be lit up.
There will be public hearings involved with the design.
I know, but at what point do we want to start having informal ones, so we at least start to know what the obstacles would be? Like, is it worth informally knocking on some doors or something, or?
Yeah, no, not to leave information.
Okay.
Right? Um, Steve Wakelin is aware of it, because he's on CPA, and he, I went to them, as you know, for the, a portion of the money for this, so, um, he is aware of it, and I'm sure he's, you know, told some of his neighbors, probably not all of them.
Is he, is he on Broad Meadow?
He's on Buckwood and Broad Meadow, I forget.
Okay.
But he's, he's in that area. Um, it's been announced at the select committee meeting, so if anybody has seen it there.
Because that one house particularly on the cul-de-sac, it's like, I know it's going to be the one that's going to be like up in arms. I, I guess either argument being it's going to become a drop-off spot. Parent, you know, 30 parents a day in the morning is going to go down there, drop their kids off, walk to school and pull, pull out, and now you have 30 cars driving through at 8, 7 a.m.
I hadn't thought about that.
Just, I, I like to start to get ahead of some of those things, but I understand that maybe.
But I, I, yeah, I think we definitely need, they have a survey working on it now, and I have to scan, um, there was a whole, um, filing with conservation, so they need that information, that's going out tomorrow, so. Um, yeah, they need to, they're, they're doing their data gathering right now, and they'll start to put something together.
So Liz, was that your update?
Um, yeah, that, and we got $30,000, and 70 from CPA for a bridge design for Island Grove Memorial Bridge, to start getting that bid. And, and I think that's it for right now.
Okay, so with the boards and donors, maybe I can spend some time with Liz realizing you've got enough.
It's all in my head.
Yeah, and maybe we can get out what's in your head.
Sure.
If you can find Liz working.
To a physical mechanism.
You could sit in my office and I'll write, and you can fire questions.
Alright.
That's fine.
So we'll take that on as an informal project.
Sure.
Because I, I. No, but you're not the only one that's no, everything's going on in the background.
Right, and I am a single point of value.
No progress is being made, I just have no feel for how much.
We're making progress.
Yeah, I don't know how much, how we're doing.
Alright, everyone, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded. See you all on Monday night at 5:00.
Monday night.
5:00 p.m. Agenda to follow.
Thank you, everyone, for watching.